Hold on, we're gonna test it again. Can we try it one more time? We wanna make sure everybody's operating. Right, but one lady's saying it didn't work.
Just to remind you that we have, we will probably not get through all 23--
Well, we're waiting to do the recheck. I've been advised to inform you that the concession stand will be closing at 9:00 PM. So if you want any concessions, plan accordingly.
We'll be taking up almost--
It works. Terrific.
Right off the bat, Article 2, which is funding for the collective bargaining agreements that were negotiated over the course of the last few months. You can also look forward to Articles 11 and 12, which have to do with what to do with free cash, that is, cash in excess of what we've budgeted for, whether to reduce the property tax rate, which is popular sentiment in some quarters, or whether to turn that to the General Stabilization Fund, our rainy day fund, if you will, for--
So I'd like to announce that we do have a quorum. I have reviewed the constable's return on the town meeting warrant and wish to report for the record that this meeting has been duly noticed properly and in compliance with all applicable laws. I would like to welcome all the town meeting reps to tonight's meeting. As has been our practice, we have two screens so that all reps may read the articles and any amendments upon which you will be voting. You can also view the slides on the screen on your iPads, laptops, computers, or other smart devices. Simply log on using the instructions on the screen, which are not on the screen, but-- do we have them? There we go. Thank you. Speaking of amendments, all amendments will be submitted on the forms, which you can get from either the town clerk or myself. If you know prior to town meeting that you intend to file an amendment, you can see me or Tris Zeris prior to the meeting for the form, or you can email them to me and I will make the necessary copies and distribute them to town council and the typist so that they will be ready before town meeting begins. And if you get it to us either prior to the introduction of that article, town council will have the opportunity to review the amendment, which will expedite the meeting. This form will create an original and three copies. The white copy goes to me, the yellow copy to the amendment assistant, which would be generally John Souza, the pink copy to the town clerk, and the orange copy you retain for your own records. I would like to thank Chumps for Telemedia for their assistance in setting up the screens, streaming, and timer, and broadcasting this meeting. Here are the rules with respect to town meeting protocol and procedure. All questions and debate shall emanate from the microphone facing the moderator at the center of the hall and shall go through the moderator. Border Committee members, other town officials, or department heads may use other microphones to answer questions or provide information to the meeting. Speakers shall refrain from asking rhetorical or argumentative questions and shall only ask questions seeking needed information. The questions should be in the "who, what, when, where, and why" mode. Kindly avoid argumentative questions that start or end with "isn't it true?" or "wouldn't you admit?" I would prefer not to have to rule questions out of order, but I am bound by the laws and regulations that define our conduct, and I will do my best to enforce them fairly and respectfully. I will allow a reasonable amount of time for follow-up questions, but I will have to intervene if any individual is asking an excessive number of follow-up questions. All presenters of articles shall be limited to 10 minutes, and I shall notify each when they have 1 minute remaining. Last year, we did it 10, 9, 8. They've actually dumied it down for my benefit, and now it'll go 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and up. With respect to discussions, speakers are encouraged to be brief, and each speaker will be limited to 5 minutes of debate. You should be able to make your points within 5 minutes. If you truly believe that is not enough time for you to make your arguments, kindly advise me in advance, and I may allow some leeway. Speakers should ask their questions prior to engaging in discussion. Making inquiry will not be considered as part of the 5-minute discussion limit unless you've started discussion and then asked questions. Once the clock starts, it will not stop until the speaker does or time expires. I would appreciate being advised that a speaker is beginning discussion. We do have some other rules of protocol. Please do not refer to any prior speaker by name. The proper designation is to call him or her "the previous speaker." Please refrain from personal attacks. Challenging or arguing in opposition to another's position is fair game, and is what this meeting is all about. Intentional slander against any individual or group cannot be tolerated. Let us refrain from repeating arguments that have already been made, but new ideas or distinctions are welcomed and encouraged. Discussion of pending litigation will not be permitted unless specifically included in the warrant article being debated. If during the course of discussion I observe several speakers on one side of an issue, but none in opposition, I will interrupt debate to inquire if there are any who wish to express the opposing position or offer an amendment. If there are none, I shall end debate and move the question. If there is opposition, I will move that party to the front of the line and allow debate to continue. I trust that you will all appreciate how this will advance our mutual goal of moving time meeting along. To those who may be next in line, should I ever have to exercise this process, you have my apologies in advance. There will not be any debating from the presenter's podium. They may answer questions, but should they want to engage in debate, presenters will have to queue up in line like everyone else. A person should not speak a second time until everyone has had an opportunity to speak, unless the previous speaker wishes to correct or dispute a statement of fact made by a previous speaker. This privilege shall be narrowly construed by the moderator. Transparency and effective governance are the two goals of town meeting. To expedite our town meetings without affecting transparency, we have successfully employed a consent agenda process in which we take routine articles, bundle them all together, and vote on them as one. These are articles that generally do not involve any questions or debate in our past in the normal course of town business. I shall request a motion that the body vote to approve consent agenda, a consent agenda involving the articles to be included in the consent agenda. This still allows for questions and answers and discussion, with the opportunity to add or delete consent agenda articles as town meeting deems best. The articles that I am suggesting for this consent agenda are Articles 7, 9, 14, and 15. Out of regard for the presenters and your fellow town meeting reps, I must respectfully request that there are no conversations at your tables. If I can hear background discussions up here, it means that there may be reps who cannot hear the presentation, questions, and answers or discussion. Thank you. I also have a list of individuals who require your approval before they may be permitted to address town meeting. They are Robin Schoen from Derry, New Hampshire, and John Kelly from Pepperell, Massachusetts. This would be regarding the matter involving the warrant article for Town Run Ambulance. So if you don't mind, I'll just take a hand vote. All in favor of allowing Robin Schoen and John Kelly to present before town meeting? Or, thank you, all opposed? Passes. Thank you very much. At this time, the town manager, I believe, has a special presentation to make? Or maybe the chairman of the Board of Selectmen? One or the other?
Either one.
Either one?
I said chairman.
Oh, I'm sorry. Pat, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Got it right the third time. Okay, first of all, we have a very special recognition this evening for a gentleman who was seated-- actually, he just stood up in the back of the room. I'm gonna read this proclamation in recognition of Charlie Holtzman. Whereas, for 39 years, Charlie Holtzman has served as general manager of the Friends of the Senior Center, raising millions of dollars, all as a volunteer. And whereas, Charlie Holtzman enlisted in the Army with Company A, 18th Infantry, 1st Division, and served for five years and 15 days, two and a half years of which were spent as a prisoner of war. He later became a civilian repairman at Fort Devens, where he worked for 26 years. And whereas, as Charlie and his second wife-- met his second wife at a senior luncheon in Chelmsford. These luncheons were an inspiration and the start of-- and to start a senior center, Charlie was an integral part of the fundraising that paved the way for the Chelmsford Senior Center to be built in 1989. And whereas, on his 99th birthday, Charlie Holtzman has decided to retire from his post, yet still plans to volunteer a few days per week alongside his wife Rita Holtzman. And whereas, Charlie Holtzman has earned the respect and the love of the staff of the Senior Center, and a granite bench will be installed beneath the flagpole in front of the Senior Center to honor Charlie's dedication to the town of Chelmsford and to his country. Now therefore, we the Chelmsford Board of Selectmen do hereby recognize Charlie Holtzman for his tremendous impact on his community and its citizens. Through his lifetime of service and dedication, he has improved the lives of countless individuals and families, and helped to establish the Chelmsford Senior Center as a valuable community resource. We extend our sincere thanks and warm wishes for happiness on the occasion of his retirement. Signed, its 5th day of October by the Board of Selectmen and sealed by town clerk.
Thank you very much.
And as you all may be aware, we traditionally recognize town meeting representatives who have reached a 10-year milestone in their service to town meeting. So this year, we have six such representatives who will receive a certificate of achievement so if they want to come up when I call their name. First is Joanne Anderson, Debbie Derry, Matthew Hansen, may not be here, Bruce Mandell, Ed Menrou, and Colleen Stansfield.
Thank you very much, Selectmen Wojcik. Mr. Manager, I'll turn the microphone over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening, town meeting representatives, others in attendance, and those watching by way of Chumps at Telemedia. Article 1 is the customary article that begins every fall and spring annual town meeting, and that's to hear reports of town officers and committees. And this evening, in accordance with our bylaws, we are required to provide a five-year financial forecast. So I'm gonna turn the podium over to John Souzer, our finance director.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Good evening. Tonight, I'd like to provide you with some highlights of our updated five-year financial forecast. In this presentation, we'll start out by taking a look at revenue trends, expenditures, and then look at the overall forecast. Under revenue, looking ahead for fiscal year '20, our largest source of revenue continues to be property taxes. So for fiscal year '20, we would start with a levy base of $97.4 million, add the 2.5% increase allowed by state law, also add a $1.5 million amount for new growth, and then finally $4.23 million for excluded debt, which is added on for bonds that have previously been issued for SOAR, school, and our DPW building project. And this gives us the total levy of $105.5 million that can be raised. Next, we'll look at state aid, our second largest revenue source. And as we know from past presentations, Chapter 70 aid for education continues to be the largest component in state aid. And looking ahead at the new year, it appears that we're estimating that Chapter 70 will increase by about $100,000, which works out to be about $20 per student, if you look at it that way. So not a large increase, but typical of what we've seen in the past. We're forecasting that general municipal aid will increase about $100,000, which is about a 2% increase. And of course, these numbers are all subject to change as the legislature, you know, moves through the state budget process. Next, we look at available funds, and that, as you know, includes its various reimbursements for a number of revolving funds and special purpose funds. Two notable ones that we often mention are the Child Care Revolving Fund, which we receive a contribution from that to pay for health insurance for school employees that are involved in that program. And also, we always have a transfer of about $2.3 million from the SOAR betterment and SOAR capital construction funds. And those amounts are used to pay for long-term debt service payments for latter phases of the SOAR project. Next, moving on to local receipts. That's our last revenue category. As we know, motor vehicle excise tax still accounts for over 50% of all the monies received in this area. We're estimating motor vehicle excise tax to be about $5.5 million for the coming fiscal year. And that's based on strength we've seen in this area for the last three years. The key takeaway from local receipts, though, is that we also see some other revenue sources kind of topping out, if you will. So in total, I'm forecasting that local receipts will go up just under $100,000 or 1%. And if we-- on this slide, we bring all the revenue sources together, and you can see that the total revenue raised will be about $137.1 million. Moving on to expenditures, some of the assumptions used in the forecast for general government personnel, we're forecasting that they will receive steps and a 2% cost of living allowance. Most expenses on the municipal side of the budget would increase 2% unless otherwise noted. For the Chelmsford Public Schools, we have an assumption built in there of about a $2 million annual increase. And then finally, for Neshoba Tech, that increase is estimated at 5% annually. However, we know from past years that that depends a lot on the student counts, the number of Chelmsford students that will attend, and we'll be receiving that information in the coming weeks ahead. Moving on to debt service. Debt service is broken down into three categories: excluded debt, non-excluded, and betterment-funded debt. And I'll just explain those in a little more detail. Excluded debt is used to finance SOAR, school, and public work facility projects wherever voters have approved a propped 2.5% debt exclusion. And I'm gonna go to the column charts, you can see this graphically. The excluded debt is shown in red on the chart, and you can see that for fiscal year '20, it's going to decline about $84,000, and then it still declines each subsequent year. And the reason for that is we're paying off the older bonds for the SOAR project. Non-excluded debt is shown in blue. It's currently $7.55 million this fiscal year, and it's projected to remain relatively flat for the coming year at about $7.53 million. Then you see on the graph, it does slowly decline over time. And as you know, this funds a lot of building projects and our capital improvement program. Finally, betterment-funded debt is shown in yellow on this chart. And as the name implies, this is the debt service that's used for all the SOAR project phases that were completed after 2005. And if you look on the graph, this is going to remain pretty flat at $2.3 million for the next five years. Looking at the employee benefits area, our Middlesex Retirement Assessment, the number that's in the forecast for '20 is an actual number. It's increasing $543,000 to $8.8 million for fiscal year '20, and that's based on a new actuarial valuation update that was completed for Middlesex County on January 1st, 2018. Our health insurance budget is estimated to increase 4% for the coming fiscal year and then 5% thereafter. And if we pull all of the different expenditure categories together on this slide, and they're grouped by function, you can see the total is $137.4 million. So if we pull this all together-- I know you have this in your handouts, this is a little difficult to read on the screen, so I'm gonna forward to a slide where the numbers are a little enlarged. So when we pull this all together, what I see coming for fiscal year '20 is right now, I'm projecting a deficit of about $346,000. Now, on a percentage basis, that's about a quarter of a percent. So at this point, it appears to be manageable. I will say, at first glance, the budget appears tight. It's something that the town manager and I will need to continue to monitor as we work through the budget development process over the coming months with all the department heads. And you can see that for the next four years, the projected deficit ranges anywhere from a half a percent to as much as just under 1% by fiscal year '24. A lot of that can change. When we look at a five-year forecast like this, looking out over a number of years, it's important to remember that there's always some uncertain budget factors that come into play. The first is state aid, which I touched on earlier. And then that's something that we'll know more about in late January, when the governor releases his budget, and then the legislature starts to begin the deliberation process. Also, the health insurance budget, because we are a very large town, the cost for both municipal and school employees for health insurance and retirees is about-- this year, it's about $12.2 million. So you can see that every 1% increase in the premiums that we receive, that's a swing of about $122,000. And then finally, the Neshoba Assessment, which we'll learn more about in late January as well. Moving on to reserves, our financial plan going forward includes maintaining a healthy stabilization fund, and that will allow us to dedicate reserves towards extraordinary capital. The town ended fiscal year '18 with just over $996,000 in free cash, and as we know, the amount of free cash varies from year to year. This slide shows a history going back to 2008, and you can see that this year, the amount of free cash we have is about 0.75%. It's a little on the low side. It's similar to what we had in fiscal year '18 and also in '14. This is a summary of the stabilization fund and the plan going forward. Just to summarize for you, in fiscal year '18, town meeting approved a withdrawal of $180,000 to fund a collective bargaining agreement. This body voted one year ago in this building to transfer $1.04 million into the fund, and we had an investment loss of about $53,000. Last year was a difficult environment for fixed income investments. So we closed the fiscal year on June 30th with a stabilization balance of $9.74 million. The transfers that you see on here, that a transfer is out, are just there as a contingency for unforeseen events. And then finally, this graph shows a history of the stabilization fund plotted as a percentage of total budgeting operating-- total budget operating revenues, and the current fiscal year is shown in red, just to highlight it. So when you look at this, you see that we've been able to maintain the stabilization balance over the past four years. It's been hovering around 7.5% of total budgeted revenue, which is right around the midpoint of our financial policies. It's something that we definitely want to keep an eye on, because stabilization reserves is something that Standard and Poor's and other credit rating agencies pay very close attention to. And it will help us retain our bond rating of AA+ and will also reduce our future long-term borrowing costs. And it will also give us the financial flexibility to respond to any unforeseen emergencies or any economic downturn that may be in the future. So that concludes the five-year forecast. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. That concludes action under Article 1, Town Reports.
Thank you. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda with the following warrant articles. Article 7, which is the Chelmsford Open Space stewards of $3,000. Article 9, Commonwealth Transportation Infrastructure Fund of $5,035. Article 14, Cable Access Utility Trailer of $10,000. And Article 15, Cemetery Improvement and Development Fund of $75,000. Do we? Okay. Okay. Any discussion? There being none, all in favor? Please, do we have the voting thing all set here? Okay, kindly vote.
So for those who haven't been tuning into town meeting in the last couple of sessions, the new wrinkle here is a consent agenda, where you take articles that don't really-- no debate is anticipated and they're very likely to pass, and you lump them together under one vote. If anyone has an objection to that, they can raise their hand, and debate will ensue on that particular article. But as you can see here, these four articles are passing handily, and it really does speed things along. It's a pretty common practice--
The article passes, 130 in favor, four opposed, one abstention. So when we get to Article 7, we'll actually do all of them together, if that's all right with town manager. Or do you want to do them now?
Your preference, Mr. Moderator.
Well, why don't we go to Article 2, and we'll--
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Article 2 is a request to transfer $158,023 from free cash to fund a employee contract agreement between the town of Chelmsford and the Chelmsford Police Association Fraternal Order of Police Lodge 110. This is the Police Patrol Officers Union. You may recall, when we were here at town meeting in the spring, we brought to you an arbitration award regarding the firefighters' union. Since that time, we recently completed an arbitration process with the patrol officers. The contract summary is as follows. It covers the standard three-year collective bargaining agreement, going back to July 1st, 2016, and going to June 30th, 2019, which means basically it'll expire at the end of this current fiscal year. The significant change in the contract is the paid work week will increase from 37.5 hours to 40 hours with no change in schedule, effective January 1st of the upcoming new calendar year. So in essence, if an officer works 7 to 3 shift, for example, they will still work a 7 to 3 shift, but instead of getting compensated for 7.5 hours during that period, they will get compensated for the full eight-hour period. If you do the math, 40 versus 37.5, you come out with a basically 6.23% increase in their net pay. So obviously, that's the big ask and the big award under this agreement. With that in mind, the arbitrator also agreed to, in its decision, to provide an increase of a half a percent for each of the three fiscal years. So July 1st salary schedule as of 2016 would increase by a half a percent. Then July 1st, 17, it gets compounded by another half a percent. And then July 1st of 2018, a couple months ago, the third half percent kicks in, and obviously, they're all cumulative and compounding. The other award for the union and the arbitration award was the shift differential will increase from $1.73 per hour to $2 per hour. So that's basically for those who work the second and third shift, which is common in the police field. On the town side, we got some givebacks. The first one was firearms training will be addressed as compensatory time as opposed to paid overtime. So when the officers have to do their mandatory firearms training, they would work with the chief. Instead of getting an overtime payment in their compensation check, they would instead be allowed paid time off at a time addressed with the chief. And then lastly, we did get light duty language in terms of we didn't agree to the language because the arbitrator agreed that the two parties, i.e. the town and the union, needed some additional time to resolve the language. And so the award language says that if no settlement is reached by the end of this calendar year, then it would return for the arbitrator to issue an award, again, on that matter. So that is the essence of the award for the patrol officers agreement. The last unit that's outstanding are the police superior officers, really comprised of the seven police sergeants. Thus far, the arbitration process has not been completed nor successful in terms of mediation. And so we have an arbitration scheduled for this Friday, October 19th, and we would expect after the hearing that there would be post-hearing briefs filed by the town and the union. Usually, they're filed within 30 to 45 days from the hearing, and then there'd be some award issued by the arbitrator, probably within 30 to 45 days after that. So we would anticipate an award around the calendar year start, and then returning here to town meeting in April to resolve, which is the last outstanding group of our collective bargaining groups. So that concludes my presentation under Article 2, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
The Finance Committee unanimously--
The Finance Committee unanimously recommends approval of Article 2.
Board of Selectmen have a recommendation?
Board of Selectmen unanimously approves this article.
Okay, this is a time for questions or answers and debate. So if anyone has any questions of the presenter, if there are none, or any comments, then we'll proceed to a vote. And it appears there are none. So let's vote on Article 2. This would permit the transfer of 158,023 from free cash to fund an employee contract between the town of Chelmsford and the Chelmsford Police Association Fraternal Order of Police, Lodge 110.
It's interesting that, this is Kelly Beadie for Chelmsford Telemedia, that there have been times in the past when these sort of arbitrated negotiations for the bargaining units within the town, the unions within the town, not just the police and the fire, but library and town, and other town employees, have been really contentious. And I've noticed a trend that...
And the article passes 135 in favor, one opposed, none, no abstentions.
...negotiated settlement.
Mr. Manager, Article 3.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Article 3 is an amendment to the current fiscal year operating budget, the fiscal year 2019 budget. We only have one change that would impact the budget that we started with out in July, and that really pertains to the Board of Health. So we're requesting under this article to raise and appropriate $33,681 to budget line item number 12, which is Community Services Personnel Services, which is the line item that the Board of Health falls under. And what's going on here is, we're seeking to provide funding to hire a full-time health director beginning in the month of December. This request comes from the Board of Health, comes from Sue Rose, who's transitioned in as the new Board of Health Director. And in her examination of the operations of the department, she's seen an increase in inspection requirements for food-related establishments over the past two years of 10%. You see, the numbers have gone up from 196 to 215. But more importantly, the overall activity of their inspectors has increased by 40% from basically just over 10 a month to over 14 per month. And that deals to issues pertaining to nuisances, noise, odor, food poisoning illnesses, mold, lead, and so forth. And I think the critical one, and this is the one that sort of moved me to support in full this request, is they had an inability to inspect all food establishments in a timely manner. And in my mind, the fundamental activities that the town provides are public safety, public health, and public education. And here's one where we're not fulfilling the obligation of public health. And to give you some of the numbers that was provided to me from the health director, in 2017, in the inspections, you can see that they provide over 132 routine inspections, and then over 225 repeat inspections. And again, not all establishments are the same, depending upon the nature of their activity, and so some require more than one inspection or reinspection, as well as they inspect areas of the schools and other activities, from farmers' markets to ice cream trucks and food trucks and so forth. And I think the key bullet is the one at the bottom of the page, with the two asterisks. The health inspector was not able to inspect 74 of the 204 listed in 2017. That's unsettling and, to me, unacceptable. We've all seen in some local accounts in the area of illness regarding food products and so forth in the area in some of our neighboring communities. And in issue of neighboring communities, I worked with the health director and said, "Well, what are the staffing levels in our comparable communities?" Because we know that we're blessed with a number of food establishments in Chelmsford, but what do we have for establishments in Belrika and in Westford and so forth? And comes to find out, we are understaffed, based on that analysis. For example, in Chelmsford, we have 215 food establishments, but we have one inspector. In Belrika has 192 food establishments. They run with two full-time inspectors. And the town of Westford has 180 food establishments, and they're running with one and a half inspectors. So again, based on analytical examination of the data, but more importantly, looking at the fundamental responsibility of the health department in the community, I would ask your support to increase this appropriation by the requested amount of 33,681. We'll bring somebody on board for the remainder of the fiscal year, full-time, and then incorporate them going forward into our operating budget. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
The Finance Committee unanimously recommends approval of Article 3.
Board of Selectmen have a recommendation?
The Board of Selectmen unanimously recommends this article.
Any questions or debate?
Just a quick question, Kathy Precinct, Kathy Precinct 1, that was good. Kathy Tuberty Precinct 1. So this is like $70,000 for a person full-time?
Yes.
And is this included in the numbers that we saw from Mr. Souza? A little, is that presupposed as part of going forward?
Yes.
Thank you.
Debbie Derry Precinct 6. I have a question, as I was looking down the list for inspections. It has 10 for tanning, but there is nothing listed for nail salons. Is that tanning inclusive of the nail salons?
She said, Sue's got to come right up and answer your question. Sue Rose, our health director, she answered your question directly regarding nail salons.
That was your question? Nail salon is not inspected by the Board of Health?
You've got to go into the mic. Nobody at home can hear you.
Hi, the Board of Health does not inspect nail salons. That is done by the state of Massachusetts. We have nothing to do with that. Not under our jurisdiction.
Thank you. Any other questions? Any discussion? There being none, we will now vote on Article 3, which is to appropriate $333,681 to the Community Services Personnel Services line item.
I'm tempted to be a little bit glib here and remind everyone that whenever they've had a bad meal somewhere, they probably say to themselves, "Boy, I wish the health inspector were here to check this place out."
Oh, 33,000. Did I say more than that? Oh, well, no, it's only 33. So anybody who's voting no, because they thought it was 300,000. You can change your vote, and I won't be...
That would be a very good salary for a health inspector, passing almost unanimously.
Article passes 133 in favor, three opposed, no abstentions. We'll go to Article 4.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Article 4 is the fiscal year 2019 Stormwater Management Enterprise Fund. The town is seeking an appropriation that totals $508,656, which is broken up 116,360 for personnel and 392,296 for expenses. And that would come from Stormwater Management Enterprise revenues. And we're also seeking appropriation of $985,000 for the following capital equipment from the stormwater division of Public Works. A light-duty truck, small SUV, two medium-duty trucks, and obviously, the major expenditure is the office buildout of the Alpha Road facility. And we would obviously borrow that, as indicated on the screen in the motion. This should all look very familiar to you. You may recall, 18 months ago, we presented in detail the whole stormwater management concept, the new federal stormwater cleanup guidelines and testing and protocols that were to be implemented in July of 2017 for Massachusetts. You remember that article was amended downward at town meeting, and it goes, we're bringing to you is the exact modified amount that was approved by town meeting 18 months ago. What ended up happening at that time was, four days before the fiscal year was to begin, and the implementation was to take effect of the new federal regulations that would be administered by the state, the federal government put a stay on the implementation of the stormwater management requirements for Massachusetts. They cited the fact that the complexity of the regulations, that they hoped to get the parties into agreement. There was litigation filed by the city of Lowell, the town of Franklin, and other communities. A year went by. We preparing our budget for spring of this year. There's no mention of it. About two weeks after we left spring town meeting, the federal government announced they would make the new stormwater management regulations effective July 1st of this past summer. However, there was no changes to the regulations that were proposed the year prior, nor was there any resolution to the litigation. And we sort of scratched our heads, saying, "Well, wait a minute. We see the administration in Washington is rolling back regulations. This is not what we foresaw, and that was why we didn't bring this in the spring." The answer that we have is that they're implementing it in Massachusetts and New Hampshire. And I think the reason why is, this would now bring the stormwater regulations up into about 2/3 of the state. So they were basically states already ahead of us in this process, and I think that the federal government saw this is not a new regulation, but an extension of its regulations that were already affecting most of the country. But bringing it back home, we have these requirements. So again, we're seeking to do the buildout, follow the directive at the spring 2017 town meeting vote. So what would end up happening is, we would, if approved at town meeting this evening, we would hire a stormwater engineer, to take employment to begin after the 1st of the calendar year for the remaining six months of the fiscal year. We'd hire a GIS manager, a foreman, and equipment operators and laborers would be hired after the winter into the spring, where they can actually get out in the field and do the work. So that comprises the $116,000 in the personnel line. And as I mentioned earlier, the major expense in the expenditure line is the Stormwater Management Assessment Plan for $300,000. It's a one-time plan. We, as well as the communities across Massachusetts, that are subject to this new requirement, were required to submit a notice of intent by October 1st, in order to be in compliance with the new federal requirements. That request was brought forth by our engineering division at Public Works. It was approved by the Board of Selectmen. We met the October 1st deadline. But we now got to implement the development of the plan and begin our process. So that's what's taking place under this article. How it will be funded is, the stormwater enterprise would again be run as a separate division, much like sewer. As Public Works, it would have its own separate accounting, its separate funds. The revenues would appear as a surcharge on the sewer bills. Basically, for the typical property owner, residential, single-family owner, you're probably going to see about a $20 per year surcharge in the first phase of this ramp-up. We'll be back in the spring with Phase 2. And then we imagine a year from now, in the fiscal year 21 budget, so it'd be 18 months from now, we'll have the full implementation plan. Then ultimately, as we discussed at that point, you're probably looking at a $70 per year surcharge for the typical single-family home. The commercial properties would pay a greater amount, and that's based on the amount of impervious material or pavement, particularly on commercial property having to do with lot size. And again, all that work is administered and done by the DPW Division. So this is where we're at with this plan. They said we got to stay for a year, but now the regulations are in effect. So for example, we need to, under this, not only complete the plan, once the plan is developed, we have to test all of our outlets, GIS map our outlets, street sweep our streets at least twice per year, make sure our catch basins are no more than half-full at any time. And of course, that varies upon the location of the catch basins, undertake stormwater drainage improvement projects, all towards the federal clean water guidelines. With that, Mr. Moderator, I conclude my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
The Finance Committee unanimously recommends approval of Article 4.
The Board of Selectmen have a recommendation?
Board of Selectmen unanimously recommends Article 4.
Now's the time for discussion or questions.
I just need explanation of one item. Office buildout, 771. So what is it? Is it like the fire department, the building for them?
No, we have, the DPW facility located on Alpha Road has an unfinished area of the building. And so what we need to do is basically go in there and finish that portion of the building so that we have an office space area for the stormwater division to operate out of. So right now, it's an unfinished former portion of the warehouse that needs to be fitted out.
So is this office space only? Will it hold equipment?
Yeah, so basically, it's an office area. So their vehicles and stuff will be done in the garage, which is adjacent to it. But this is basically installing lighting, HVAC, carpets, desk areas, and so forth in that area of the building.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Brian Latina, Precinct 4. Mr. Moderator, through you to the town manager, could you annualize those numbers? We had a personnel number, and then we had kind of a capital number, trucks and building and all that.
The, as I said, this is a phased-in approach. So what we're seeing here is, if nothing were to change, you would basically see the numbers, in essence, double for the first two positions, so there'd be an extra $65,000. And then the last four positions, there'd be an extra $50,000. So there's basically $110,000 right there. But as I said, we're going to ramp up. The division is not going to be just one crew and a foreman. When it's fully blown up, you're basically looking at a more than doubling of this size in order to meet, we have 230 road miles across the community of infrastructure that's under the ground in terms of drainage, outlets, and so forth. We have to go in there and map it, and we have to go in there and maintain it, as well as other aspects of it. So as we said, you're probably looking at roughly about a third of the implementation coming in this spring, shown here. And as what we heard clearly at the 2017 Spring Annual Town Meeting, we were to ramp this thing up and implement it, and so that's what we're doing. But when this is fully blown, you're looking at a budget that's basically three times what you're seeing here under this initial phase.
So we're probably talking $1 million in expense, ongoing expense from now until forever?
Forever, that's correct.
And we have 2,500 storm drains. We're going to dig four feet down in the bottom. Is that still the design versus the two feet we have today?
Yeah, again, everything has to meet standards out in the community by the federal government and state government. So all that work will have to take place. It's one of the concerns that we have. You know, we note, you note in the media, the aging gas infrastructure and how that's been a concern. We saw it in Lawrence, North Andover, and you saw something happen in Woburn, and you hear the state saying they're going to go out and inspect everything. I'm not hesitant to say that I think one of the other hidden defects in our infrastructure across Massachusetts is our underground infrastructure, in terms of the stormlines that go under these communities that really have been under-invested in. And this is why the federal government is doing these standards, to find out, one, are you getting illicit infiltration into the systems that are going into your streams and rivers? And you may recall the presentation from April of 2017, where every body of water in Chelmsford is classified as a contaminated water source by the federal government, and that steps have to take place, such as infiltration, filtration systems, proper housekeeping and maintenance of these systems, not only for the town, but also for the commercial establishments who have those on their properties. And so unfortunately, it's the federal government coming to the reality of, the next phase in the environmental protection has to do with stormwater, which affects our drinking water supply.
And how many towns in Massachusetts have already enacted this? Are we the first?
No, we are all subject to the same requirements. There are communities that are ahead of us on this curve. There were communities who, for at least the last six to 10 years, have sort of foreseen this coming and have enterprise funds in place. We now are with the majority of communities in Massachusetts who have to meet the new requirements. And so for example, what you won't see anymore in Chelmsford on the roadways is, we won't be putting sand with our road salt. As I said, we'll be out there sweeping more frequently, we'll be out there doing maintenance. But most importantly, we have to do testing during the wet seasons and during the dry seasons to verify to the federal government and the state regulatory agencies that we're taking best management practices in terms of stormwater quality control.
And one last question. Why wouldn't we take a regionalized or contractor approach to this, since we have no experience in stormwater management like they do in California, Texas, and other places where they have great runoff? We have kind of constant runoff. My street floods every year.
Right.
You know?
And you... And you probably know the problem over at Anse. We now have to go in, and we actually are going to hire a contractor to replace in full the lines on Anse Road because of the flooding that goes there every time it rains hard.
I know Mr. Lynch already did that once.
Exactly. The answer is, is we are participating. We're not going it alone. We are in a stormwater collaborative with the Northern Middlesex Council of Government where we're undergoing best management practices, training, procurement, and so forth. But when it comes down to actually having people in the field, that is being done by the community. So we are in a collaborative approach.
People in the field, shared equipment, I'm sure these things aren't going to be used every single day, eight or 12 hours a day. We wouldn't share that with Bilrika?
Right, but that's why you can see, we're not buying, we're not purchasing specialized equipment. What we're basically purchasing for the first year is the base equipment, you know, basic medium-duty trucks, small SUVs, light trucks. When it comes down to the issues such as, you know, the sewer vac equipments and so forth, then we will look to see if that's possible, to do that on a regional basis. Thank you.
Thank you.
Clutch, not Precinct 7. Through the moderator to the speaker. I think I have two questions or comments requests. I don't know what they are. The first one is, since this is an enterprise fund, I assume in future town meetings, the Finance Committee will be presenting information regarding sort of what the costs are in that budget, as well as revenue raised. And I asked the manager the other night, the cost to the residents and how it's going to be supported, because it's not coming through the tax rate. I see in this presentation, all the information needed to support tonight's article, but a lot like the prior speaker, I'm trying to understand in my head what's sort of the long-term impact of this. And I hope that the Finance Committee will be able to give us a better sense as a body come Spring Town Meeting, what this is running, as well as a sense of how the revenues are getting raised, and what are the residents going to pay for this? And if you could specifically answer what the residents are paying for this in addition to their taxes tonight, I would assume there's a lot of people at home that would have a big question off of their list if they're watching.
Yes, I think I mentioned earlier, the surcharge would be roughly $20 for a single-family home.
This year?
Starting in this year. Ultimately, it would be $70 is our best estimate. When it's fully functional.
Is that to anticipate, then, that the costs that we're going to see are also going to go up by three-point-something?
Yes.
Beginning next spring?
Well, probably not next spring, because we'll just be getting underway. So you won't, we won't go 20 to 70 next spring. You're probably going 20 to about 40, 45, and then the final step, the fiscal year 21 budget.
And this is annual?
Annual.
So regardless of how many times the sewer bills come out, that's the annual number?
Right, so sewer bills come out semi-annually, you'll get it assessed in each of the semi-annual bills.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Helen Blazile, Precinct 3. Paul, does this include condos, private property?
Yes, yes. In fact, condos and private properties have obligations, because on those private properties, you often have your own collection systems that have to be maintained.
Right, do we have to do it with the town?
But you'd also pay for the town, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Paul Ragazio, Precinct 7. I just want to thank the town manager for building this department on a gradual basis rather than a full-blown basis, which is what was done or presented two years ago. So I thank you for that. Second is, what capital expenditures do you expect next year? Because I know the original proposal was like $2 million, and this is only a million.
Yeah, this is only a million. The larger equipment starts coming as you start going out to the full build-out, and that's where you start getting into funding for capital projects, and you also get into specialized equipment, much like you have with the sewer division, where you have the pump stations, and you have the sewer vacs and so forth. On the stormwater side, you'll have the same type of thing, but predominantly, it's projects. We have to, we have to implement best management practices based on the outflow testing. And that's really what it's driven by, is we map the entire system with our GIS system. We then have to test every outlet that comes out, and based upon the results that come out of those outlets, we now have to go back and perform investigation and remediation to address basically substandard test results. And so again, we have a prospective budget that looks at that type of, those type of projects, but I can't give you those lists of projects, because again, they haven't been fully identified. That's why we want to, we need to spend the appropriation of the expenditure amount of $300,000 to do the assessment plan. That will then guide, that plan will then guide how we implement and operate to meet the federal requirements.
Okay, no, I understand. My last question is, the seven, or the nine, the million-dollar capital that you're raising now, and whatever capital you raise in the future, that will be, the debt payment on that will be out of this fund?
That's correct.
So the $70 doesn't anticipate debt payment? Thank you.
Exactly.
Thank you. Thank you.
Tom Fall, Precinct 5. Mr. Moderator, through you to the speaker. Paul, you consider this an unfunded mandate, correct?
Yes, it is. It's an unfunded federal mandate, and therefore, it does not subject to the state's anti-mandate requirements. So yes, it is an unfunded mandate. However, I think that they believe, and I think from what I've seen in terms of the national perspective, they believe this one has support, that the idea of having bodies of water, such as the Charles River and other noted undesirable places, that actually become swimmable and improve the water quality for those generations ahead of us, although it's an unfunded mandate, it seems to have broad support.
So do you believe down the road that we may be getting some funding from the federal government on this?
No, federal government's not coming to the rescue on this at all. And we don't anticipate any state funding in the foreseeable future as well. They fail to pass the buck down. They provide the regulations and then leave it to the locals to implement. So we don't foresee any relief coming in the foreseeable future.
Hopefully, we could start talking to a few representatives in Congress, people in Congress. Thank you.
Thank you.
Glenn Thorpe, Precinct 5. I ask your pardon, because this may be the engineer coming out in me. We're spending $1 million a year hiring people, buying equipment to do something. Clean out stormwater drains, measure flow, things. How do we know how successful $1 million a year is buying us on an annual basis? Who's in charge of looking at the measurements? What are the measurements? What are the quality factors in the measurements? And how do we know if we're spending $1 million a year and nothing changes, I have a problem with that?
Right. We are subject to the requirements of testing by the federal government. So for example, we submit a, we filed one, a notice of intent to perform this work and have this analysis performed. We then have to meet their testing requirements. If we don't meet the testing requirements, they're going to come out and analyze with us, where are the infiltration coming from? And how do we improve the water quality to meet the federal standards? Honestly, Glenn, I can't answer the question until we see the plan and we get the tangible results of the plan. But George, if you don't meet the, if you don't meet the requirements, then you've got the obligation to undertake that reverse engineering to find out what is it that isn't meeting the requirements, and then implement the solution. Most of it, we believe, will be done by best management practices in terms of new construction. But also, one of the biggest problems that we see is these systems get put in, and subdivisions, and plazas, and so forth, and then they're never maintained the day after they're installed. And so the goal here is to require, inspect, and make sure that they're putting, that they're cleaning and maintaining the infiltration systems, the oil-water separators, and also, most importantly, the concerns of illicit discharge, that illicit discharge is not going into these systems that are basically polluting the bodies of water in the community that then go out into the ocean.
So just, I almost got the question answered. So the DPW is in charge of this, is that correct?
Yes, there'll be a, much like we have a DPW highway division, and we have a DPW sewer division, we will have a DPW stormwater division.
So the federal standards will be available upon request from the DPW. There'll be water quality measurement standards, there'll be maps of the town where everything is being measured, there'll be a day-one measurement that says, this is what we are now, because we haven't done anything yet. And then a year from now, or in the interim, up to a year from now, there'll be other measurements taking place, which will be available to town meeting representatives and anybody else, that shows that whatever we're doing, and there's a lot of things you mentioned, is successfully remediating or meeting the federal standards. Is that, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Sue Carter, Precinct 5. I know we have no choice, but I have a question for you. I'm looking, and you're saying you're going to get an engineer who's going to basically be a department head, and we're only going to be paying them $66,000 a year. I think that price needs to be more like $110,000 a year, because it is impossible to find qualified people right now.
We are basically, we are going to staff it with the existing senior administrative staff we have in Public Works as we get this off the ground. If it becomes the point where it's that cumbersome, then we would revisit the question of, do we need to bring in a person of that skill and capability? But I believe with Christina and Steve onboard in Public Works and the Engineering Division, that they can, they can launch this program for us and hopefully guide it for the foreseeable future.
Okay, so if we're going to use existing people in the DPW, why do we have $33,000 for new salary?
Because we need, we need an engineer who's going to focus on the stormwater aspects.
Okay, are they going to be a professional engineer, or just an engineer in training?
No, there'll be, there'll be a professional engineer.
So that comes back to my point. I am a professional engineer. I have my own company, and we have been looking for people. And if you go to Indeed, there's a million people looking for engineers. You're not going to find someone for $66,000 a year. I just want to make sure that we don't have this, and then we have a special town meeting in January, because we can't find somebody to work for that amount.
You're right, hiring is a challenge these days, there's no question about that.
It's brutal out there, and then you want somebody who specializes in stormwater. This is a new, growing field, and there's a lot of training involved. So if you get somebody that's already trained, you're not getting enough of that price. I just want to make sure that we're being realistic in what we are presenting tonight so that we give you enough money to truly get this off and running with the right people on board. Do you have some, other than just working through the DPW, do you have someone in mind to be hiring to fit that position as the stormwater engineer?
No, I don't have any, we don't have, we've not identified any prospective employees at this point in time. Again, we'll be participating with the state, as well as our, the Northern Middlesex Collaborative to implement these programs. And we, again, we hope that there are lessons that can learn across the communities. If it ends up costing us more, then we'll have to adjust within that budget until we can get to the point of full implementation.
Okay, I just, you know, if we're going to bite the bullet, I just want to make sure we can have the right people on board so that if you pay somebody that little, they're going to get trained, and then they go to, go to a bigger, bigger town for more money, sort of like you see with a lot of the professionals that start out here and then move on to a bigger community. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nancy Arroway, Precinct 1. Mr. Moderator, through you to the town manager. Paul, I'd like to get clarification on what I think I heard. What I thought I heard from you is that these standards are performance-based.
Yes.
So they're, they don't specifically tell you how to do it, but tell you the results that you need to get. And the article that we have here in front of us is more or less a $1.5 million expenditure to solve a problem that we have not yet measured. Is that what I heard?
Well, the federal stormwater regulations are in existence. They've been out in existence for, at this point, for, oh, they came out for a comment three years ago. They've been in the final form for over 15 months. So we know what's required under the program. What we haven't done is we haven't done our comprehensive assessment here in Chelmsford to determine where we stand in performance. And then it becomes a maximum extent feasible in how we can meet those, meet those standards. So yes, the guidelines are there. And as I mentioned earlier, Massachusetts and New Hampshire is implementing at the same time. We're not the first ones in the pool. More than two-thirds of the states across the country have been subject to this program. So the standards are out there, the metrics are out there. What Massachusetts is doing is Massachusetts is taking the state to be the administrator of the federal regulations. So the prescription is out there. We just haven't developed the local plan, done the local mapping, have the local test results to determine where are the problems in Chelmsford that need to be addressed. That won't become evident until we complete that work.
So for all we know, we could already be compliant, or we could be entirely out of spec?
Well, we know we're not compliant, because when they test the water quality at Freeman Lake, at streams across the community, we know those are polluted body waters in accordance with the federal regulations. So we know that there's infiltration. We also, as I mentioned earlier, we know the age of our system, that there are issues out there with our drainage system that have to be addressed. So we know that, we know that we're not going to wake up and say, oh my gosh, weren't we fortunate in Chelmsford? We did all of our testing, completed our report, nothing to see here, folks, move on. No, we know that there are challenges in front of us. What we haven't been able to define is what specific projects do we have to implement to attain the desired outcomes that are specified by the federal requirements?
So this becomes an opportunity to upgrade our aging infrastructure?
Exactly, in the area of stormwater. That's correct. Our sewer infrastructure is solid. We know that's coming around now for next generation. And in fact, we'll be here in the spring with another sewer project that's almost $1 million of basically modernizing or keeping up the state with our sewer infrastructure. What this now is, is the investment in our stormwater infrastructure.
Thank you.
Brian Latina, Precinct 4. Mr. Moderator, I'm going to vote no on this. I'm kind of tired of people telling me I can't vote. I have to vote yes on this, because somebody in the federal government came up with a new regulation, and we want to be first. I spent some time in Federal Way near Seattle, a location that had more surface water engineers and workers and equipment than they did taking care of the kids in the community. Tried to get a kid taken care of sitting by the side of the road. They had one person in charge of that, and they had 14 engineers for surface water in Seattle Federal Way. They have a longtime expertise out there, by the way. And I'm guessing that there are consultants, and there are contractors that would love to take $1 million of Chelmsford money in the next 12 months and check every single one of our storm drains out, all 2,500 of them, probably test them, probably have their own trucks and equipment. I'm going to guess they already have an engineer. And for $1 million, maybe $750, we could get the same thing, and at the end of the year, we could come back to this body and look at that idea and see if we need to hire people for the next 20 years, let's say. Hiring the people up front is kind of scary. And putting, putting up $116,000 in front of town meeting tonight is a little disingenuous when you calculate an engineer at $66,000, folks. I'm sorry, that's ridiculous. They don't exist for that, that's true. The laborers probably don't exist for that either. And if we're only going to look at our DPW and not the rest of the country that's already doing this, we're not going to hire a contractor to come in and do it for us. I think, I think we're in for some trouble here. We're talking $1 million a year to start, $2 million worth of build-out on our DPW building, we're getting up to that $4 or $5 million for a new department. Let's look at having a contractor come in, do the initial work for us, teach us how, or use some expertise that's already out there. Federal Way, I bet you you could hire a couple of those people out there for a couple hundred thousand dollars apiece, they could come back. Weather and water out there to here are the same, given our build-outs that we're doing here, 648 new units, great new project over on Mill Road, another project on Turnpike, another project over on Kensington, another project over here on Mill Road. We shouldn't be designing this based on our background that we know. We should be designing it for the future and the next 20 or 30,000 people that'll be living in Chelmsford over the next 20 years. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tom Fall, Precinct 5. Paul, what's, this is, we have to do it. I mean, it's, this is something we have, don't have a choice. If for some reason we don't vote this, what's going to happen?
We will be subject to fines by the federal government. I believe there are at least $5,000 per day for noncompliance with the federal regulations. We need employees out there to do this. We can have all the studies, but we know we have to clean catch basins. We know we have to- basins. We know we have to street sweeps, street, sweep streets. We also know we have to do testing out in the field. So we need employees and equipment to do those essential functions as well as the projects that will come down the road. So yes, we have to do this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Debbie Derry, Precinct 6. I've got a question. Thanks. I've got a question. As I was sitting there and I was looking at all the figures, what are we currently doing with the, the DPW on Richardson Road? What is stored in there?
There are no permanent plans to date for the future of the DPW facility on Richardson Road. We anticipate by the end of this fiscal year, we will move the DPW maintenance operation over to Alpha Road. That is the only piece of unrestricted town property that the town owns that could be used for municipal purposes. So it's, that's, so right now, there is no future plan for that property.
Well, when you talk about $772,000 as an add-on to the current, to the Alpha Road, why can't we use the old DPW?
Because it's in dilapidated condition. That's the reason we left there to begin with.
Well, I thought it was planned-
There is no suitable office space over there. The buildings have aged out. As we did see, we saw telemedia recently come before the body. They, they did an upgrade to one of the garage bays in which they housed their new truck, mobile studio that's utilized for town meetings such as this evening. But the-
And how much was that?
There aren't any facilities over there that could house this division.
Well, there's four trucks that I read on the sheet. So four trucks. How many trucks were, were they housing before plus the offices?
Oh, you had, remember, the, they had the whole facility over in Alpha, Alpha Road, on Richardson Road. And most of our vehicles were kept outside, and that was part of the premature use of, useful life of those vehicles was because they were outside, they were rusting and so forth. Now with the Alpha Road facility, all of our equipment is housed indoors. And we also took down some of the deteriorated buildings that were over there, and we removed the portable trailer that was the office building for the Highway Division. So there really, there really isn't a lot left over there on Rich, on Richardson Road that is useful that, and I don't see any scenario where we could house the stormwater division over there.
Well, I thought it might be nice if we could save $772,000.
Thank you.
Beth Logan, Precinct 3. I just wanted clarification because I wanna make sure I understood something that was said. Did I understand it right that there was already some testing and that, that our town is viewed as having contaminants in our water today?
Yes. When we, when we gave the presentation back at the 2017 Spring Annual Town Meeting, we identified and showed on the map all the functional bodies of water that do not meet the federal standards of water quality. And again, it wasn't unique to Chelmsford. I mean, you know, these, these exist out there and, and all of our adjoining communities in Eastern Mass. And that's why I say, not every community in Massachusetts is subject to the stormwater management requirements. It's primarily basically most of Worcester East, aside from the urban areas out in the western part of the state. And it basically, it's, it's due to the nature of the community, particularly impervious materials and, and so forth. But yes, we have, we have data online that shows that these are, these are non-compliant bodies of water that meet the water quality standards.
So, thank you for answering my question. My comment is that I believe that the town of Chelmsford should be less concerned about the finances and more concerned that your children are growing up in a community where the water, and therefore the soil also that they're in contact with, that they play at, at the fields that they play on, which some of our fields and towns are, are hydrated from wells, and our water comes from the town, right? We use all our water, I think there's some from Lowell, but our water sources are right here. And that what you are drinking and the place your kids are playing is the water that has been recorded as contaminated. And this should help reduce that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? It appears as though there isn't. So at this point, we will vote on Article 4 to appropriate $508,656 from Storm Water Management Enterprise revenues to operate a Storm Water Management Enterprise for fiscal year 2019, and authorize the borrowing of 950, 985,000 for the Storm Water Enterprise Office build-out and vehicles.
They, they already did that. They did that very first thing.
So we're looking at a, what may turn out to be a very important vote here in town meeting. Essentially-
Okay, the article passes. 114 in favor, 17 opposed, no abstentions.
Essentially, the creation of a new department within the DPW with a-
Article 5?
Nick Vismar.
Article 5 is a warrant article that's sponsored by the Board of Selectmen. It's to request a transfer of $55,000 in free cash to be expended by the Board of Selectmen in conjunction with the creation of an ad hoc public safety study committee for the purposes of hiring a consultant to examine whether the town should establish a municipal emergency ambulance service and whether the town should consolidate its fire stations. I'm going to turn the microphone and podium over to Selectwoman Emily Antoul, who is going to give the presentation under this article.
Thank you, Mr. Town Manager. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Hello. This past spring, this body voted to appropriate funds from free cash to keep all five fire stations open because it wanted time to consider other options. The Select Board took that very seriously and tasked me with looking into it. When I came to this, I had no opinion. I looked at it as a research opportunity, an investigation opportunity, and an opportunity to learn something. I like to learn new things, and so I took this very seriously. The Firehouse Master Plan and Ambulance Study is an endeavor to improve public safety, community well-being, quality of life, and care in the community. Due to operating costs, closure of a station may be necessary. We don't know that. We need to look carefully at where our stations are placed, whether it is indeed possible to move them. And we can't do that by ourselves. So my information gathering methods were designed to get independent confirmation of the costs of various options. I called several public safety consulting firms and billing companies that specialize in ambulances, and I explained that I was not looking for an official RFP, but merely gathering information to be able to present a warrant article at our fall town meeting, per my chairman's instructions. I then gave them Chelmsford's basic demographics and our transport statistics, and asked what they thought we might do with our five fire stations and whether or not at our scale, a town-based ambulance made sense. They all agreed that a master plan study to see where stations could be optimally, optimally moved was the way to go. They all expressed disbelief that we hadn't gone to a town-based ambulance before, given the profit margin on current trends and insurance payments models. I asked no leading questions. I simply presented the demographics and explained why we had five fire stations to begin with. We had a master plan done in 2007 before we built the new center station. It did not take into account satellite locations with the new central station. The ideal location for a center station at Drum Hill next to the police headquarters was deemed too expensive, despite the fact it would have allowed for a reconfiguration of the satellite stations. The Board of Selectmen at the time then rejected a grant to cover additional staffing needed to maintain all five stations open, and one was consequently closed on a rotating basis. The goal alluded to at Spring Town Meeting, as I understood it, is to bring back money to the town and maintain or increase the level of public safety, community, well-being, and quality of life and care. Currently, we are letting a source of revenue leave the town, which is fiscally irresponsible. Given the changes in the past decade around how health care is delivered and what percentage of the population is insured, a new committee would need to be performed consisting of a Select Board member, the fire chief, a fire department union representative, a FinCom rep, and four community members with excellent qualifications for any and all of the following: data and applied mathematics, public safety, health care, the expanding role of the modern fire department, or an open mind and general interest in the above topics. The only objections I have heard, not based on personal feelings about the current setup, are the concern over resources and the unlikely, but of course possible, event of a mass casualty incident, and the question of whether or not the town can adequately train EMTs. In a mass casualty incident, all available area ambulances and personnel are called into service. We would have three ambulances in town if we include the proposed and necessary backup vehicle, plus all the local area ones. In our current model, only two are contracted to be in town during the day and only one at night. According to officially filed reports, we require a third ambulance 5% of the time and a fourth or fifth about 1% of the time. This is absolutely normal, according to the Office of Emergency Medical Services of the State of Massachusetts. If we had our own transporting ambulances, we would go to mutual aid 5 to 10% of the time. This is also normal, and mutual aid is determined by the location of the emergency and where the nearest mutual aid ambulance is located. Of course, in an emergency situation, any passing ambulance would stop to save a life, as that is their job. We have three ambulance companies within the borders or at the borders of this town, giving us far more than the normal number of ambulances should a serious emergency arise. In addition, as needed, the Northeast Central Medical Emergency Direction in Lawrence, Massachusetts would be activated and coordinate a response among all first responder vehicles. This includes private and public companies. Billing would still happen, and bills would still get paid by insurance companies and Medicare or Medicaid as appropriate. Ambulances are service providers and charge health insurance companies. Your insurance company and your chosen plan determines what you will pay for any service you receive, and that includes emergency medical services. EMTs go through a standardized training. Additionally, all of our current firefighters have their certification as a condition of employment. That means we cannot hire a firefighter who does not have their EMT certification. They have years of in-the-field experience. A plurality of our police officers also has their certification. Last I heard, it was 60%, and they are working on increasing that number. Frequently, our town employees, the police and fire, are the first to arrive at the scene and the first to provide triage and emergency services. The ambulances then transport as necessary, but our highly qualified police and fire are often first at the scene. Chelmsford is a heart-safe community, and several of the contractors I spoke to, the consultants, were impressed by that because we carry defibrillators in our police cars. We have Narcan. We have lifesaving equipment at the fingertips of our public safety officers, whether that is firefighters or police. We are already paying for well-trained EMTs, and they are dedicated to our town. They are our friends, our neighbors, our relatives, relatives of our friends and neighbors. They live here, they work here, they raise their families here. Private companies often only pay $11 to $14 an hour and have heavy turnover of their ambulance drivers because they are used as springboards into full-time careers with other public safety divisions. In addition, our firefighters respond to over 400 medical call, 4,000, excuse me, 4,000 medical calls each year, and successfully run a non-transport ambulance, which does not collect fees. This means we are already paying for an ambulance, but not getting paid for it the way we would be if we could transport. I have been proudly informed by several private company owners that turnover is part and parcel of their business model. They train new folks to move on to better jobs because they have no intent of maintaining the sort of salary and benefits required for a career position below a management level.
You have one more minute.
I didn't realize there was a time limit. I'm sorry.
Yes, I announced at the beginning of the meeting 10 minutes for presentations.
I will speak faster. The cost of an ambulance is brought up regularly. As I mentioned earlier, ambulances are insurance, are service providers paid for by your insurance companies. Massachusetts has a population that is near 100% insured. I spoke with four separate billing companies that are used to working with municipalities and municipal ambulance services, either through the fire department or standalone EMS, standalone EMS department. You have so much information here. They all gave estimates of 1.6 to 2. million dollars in income from the ambulance. Billing companies charge 3 to 8% of what they collect as a fee. If they don't collect, they don't charge. Westford collects an average of 627 for basic life insurance, which is what we would be doing. If the warrant is approved, I anticipate a year of deliberation over this as the consultant and the committee do their work, and then a decision to be made by fall 2019. An update would be given in spring 2019, so you know what the committee is doing. By fall 2019, I imagine we would be looking to train or already in the process of training our new firefighter EMTs, and would be purchasing ambulances in 2020 when our current contract is up.
You've exceeded your permissible time, but I'm sure people will have questions, and you will have an opportunity to answer them.
All right.
Okay, does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
The Finance Committee actually recommends approval of Article 5.
Does the Board of Selectmen have a recommendation?
The Board of Selectmen approve this 3 to 2.
Now's the opportunity for anyone who has any questions or wishes to speak on the article.
Glenn Thornt, Precinct 5. You referred either directly or by reference to two reports that I, I think you mentioned. One was a master plan, which is, for the fire station, which you said had no examination of the appropriate location of other fire stations. Is that what I heard?
No. I said, it did not examine extra or different locations of the satellite fire stations-
Yeah, yes.
-with the central fire headquarters placed where it is. It only looked at satellite locations if it had placed the headquarters next to the police station. And at that point, Engine 2 would have been closed and moved and consolidated. So there, there would have been a way to go down to 4, or I think 3, I forget. But there would have been a way to consolidate satellite fire stations had the central headquarters been placed with the police station. It was not, and so they, they didn't actually look at that possibility.
So, so, did it look at the response time from each of those satellite locations to every place in town that you would wanna put a, a fire truck or some kind of emergency service? Did it look at the response time for all the locations in the town?
With the locations it was tasked up looking at, yes.
Okay.
Which is what a new study would do.
And there is also a, there was an ambulance study committee report done some time ago. I think you alluded to that. Could I see by a show of hands the members of the Board of Selectmen who actually read through that plan? So if I ask questions on the content of the plan, and anyone could answer that, I assume that's correct. Pardon? I, I, your microphone must not be working.
You mentioned two different studies.
Yes.
Which one are you saying?
The, the most recent one. I think John Tebow was the chairman of that committee, if I'm not mistaken.
The 2007?
Yes, correct.
What do you want to know about it?
So, so everyone has looked at the trades in that plan. I, I don't recall, but perhaps you could help me. Mass casualty incidents, was that discussed in that plan?
Off the top of my head, I don't know. I know what the conclusions of that were, and I know what the, the guiding question and the mission statement was.
Could you refresh the town meeting on what the main conclusions were?
The main conclusions were that a hybrid model, which is used by almost no one, because it is a non-viable model, would not be viable for Chelmsford. it is a non-viable model, would not be viable for Chelmsford. The committee specifically stated that had it been directed to look at 100% fire department-based model, it felt that that was a valid option. However, it was not directed to look at that, and therefore could not make an official recommendation around that.
So would I be corrected assuming that a mass casualty incident, which you referred to, is not a driving concern on the plan, and reading between the lines again, that cost-benefit to the town would be?
I, of course, a mass casualty incident would be a concern, but that is handled through, through the office in Lawrence, usually. If it cannot be handled by mutual aid contracts, the office in Lawrence that handles mass casualties does that. And it does that because when you are dealing with a mass casualty, say, an airplane has to land on 495 for whatever reason.
It just wasn't clear why that was emphasized in your presentation.
Because those were the two objections that I have heard. People were concerned that there would not be enough ambulances in town in the event of a mass casualty, and the other concern was that EMTs wouldn't be trained. But EMTs go through a standard training, so one EMT is trained the same as the next. The question is, how many years of experience do they have, and what is their range of experience? So, those were the two objections that I've heard.
Last question I have, is there an agency or a consultant firm that you have in mind that might be beneficiary of this $55,000 or so?
I spoke with several. One has been significantly more responsive and forthcoming with data and charts and price points for me. There are a couple of others that strike me. They all have the same sort of people working for them.
Are you able to share those names if you've discussed them?
ESCI is the one that has been, that gave me an actual chart. There's one in New Hampshire. I don't have these written down. There's one in New Hampshire that I spoke with, and there is one on the South Shore. So ESCI is the one that I have had the most contact with, because they have been the most communicative. But there are certainly others out there.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Tom Moran, Precinct 8. Back in the early 90s, I was one of the five people elected to do an ambulance study. And the ambulance study happened because when I was fighting to reopen the West Fire Station, a woman called me up and said, "We don't have any ambulance service. They come from down on Fayette Street in Lowell."
Excuse me, Mr. Moran. Are you going to ask a question?
I have my questions.
Well, I didn't know. I didn't know whether you're debating or asking a question, so I just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
I will be up at debate. But there's information here that's on, that isn't being talked about. They talk about by-
No, no, no. Why don't you just ask your question, and we'll do debate later, okay?
Sure.
Thank you.
Have you gone to Trinity and looked at the services they provide and the training that those people have today?
I have not been able to coordinate the time to visit with them, but ambulance companies, again, because it is EMT, there is a standard system.
I'd encourage you to do that, because that was a relatively important decision. Have you looked at some of the towns that have in-town ambulance?
Yes.
Have you, an estimate, and there is one available, of how many people we are looking to add to the town retirement plan and work plan in order to staff a series of ambulances?
Yes.
And we're not talking about EMTs.
Would you like an answer?
You asked a question, so leave her, give her an opportunity to respond, please.
Personnel to staff, two ambulances full-time would run approximately $1 million, and that is inclusive of everything. I know that in the past, people did not pay as much into their pensions as they needed to keep them solvent. However, current employees pay 14% of their salary into their pension funds, in addition to the 6% going into Social Security to pay for current retirees. Their pensions are funded. $1 million would cover the 16 employees needed to staff ambulance, two ambulances, full-time. There would be an additional cost of a clerical position for scheduling. So it would be $1 million. We would be pulling in $1.6 to $2 million, according to every estimate out there. There was a Wall Street Journal article in 2015 that backed up all of the numbers from all of the consulting firms, the ambulance and fire truck manufacturer that the state of Massachusetts deals with, all the billing companies. All the numbers were the same. I was given the same numbers by all of these different organizations, and I am confident that these numbers are what they are, especially because every single study indicated that a fully fire department-based ambulance would be functional.
Have you read in detail the report that we submitted to the town in the mid-'90s to justify having out-of-town ambulance for $1 versus the cost of trying to do it, hiring approximately 20 people in the town rolls?
Yes. The problem is that right now, Chelmsford has rejected other sources of the income. We are looking at an upcoming deficit with our budget. We are having trouble paying for things. We will have more trouble paying for things as the deficit grows. Your ambulances run about $200,000 apiece. Your fire trucks run about $750,000 apiece. We have three ambulances coming off, or three, excuse me, three fire trucks that need replacing in the early 2020s, each at a cost of around 3/4 of $1 million. If we have $600,000 to $1 million coming in extra, in addition, because we are now being paid for our ambulance services, we, reminder, we run a non-transport ambulance. We cannot transport injured or sick people to the hospital. If we have a transport ambulance, we get paid by insurance companies, the same as any other ambulance or service provider would be paid. We would then be getting $600,000 to $1 million extra in income, which would help to fray the costs of the trucks, and that is after paying for the staff.
Have you looked at the cost recovered by the surrounding towns relative to having in-town ambulance, for the in-town ambulance, versus having private ambulance for $1?
We get no private, we get no revenue from private ambulance. We get dispatch fees reimbursed at $80,000 a year. This is, this is what a, this is what a town-run ambulance brings in at our size with our number of transports. We transport close to 3,000 a year. It's above 2,500. It's getting close to 3,000. So yes, I have, and we would be bringing in money.
I would have liked to have seen, because the town has a copy of the original study that we did, should have been distributed along with this, because it's some of those monies.
Yep, Mr. Moran. Hold on, hold on, hold on, please, please, please. Mr. Moran, we're talking about a study that was done 20 years ago. I've given you a lot of leeway talking about that, but let's not talk about something that was 20 years ago, when our population wasn't what it is, and when the EMT thinks. I'm not taking a side, but I want you to understand that let's, there was a more recent report. If you want to refer to that, I don't have a problem with it, but, but don't refer to the old, old one. Refer to the new, old one.
Careful what you wish for.
Jim Glancy, Precinct 2, and Chair of the Finance Committee. Mr. Moderator, a point of clarification. Is it not a combined comment and question period?
It is, but, but if you're going to not ask questions, I'm going to time your comment. If you're going to ask questions, that's fine. If you ask questions, then go into comment. Once you start commenting, you're on the clock for the five minutes.
So you're saying I should style it like a question?
Are you asking me a question?
No, you can start the timer.
Okay.
The Finance Committee reached its vote this evening unanimously, based upon a presentation and discussion that we had earlier this evening. That discussion came to the conclusion, after the presentation discussion with the presenter and the Board of Selectmen, that this funding of $55,000 is for simply a third-person independent study with an open-ended result, not a determined result as is presented in the slides this evening. So although that is the slant of the discussion, based upon the information that's been gathered, the understanding by the Finance Committee is that this is an independent vote that could have any outcome. That amount that has been arrived to is $40,000 approximately for that portion, and there may be additional $15,000 which will be needed, although the presenters, the Board of Selectmen do not want to return to us for the additional money, should that be reached within the committee's purview.
Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I do have-
Identify yourself by stating your name and address.
Certainly. John Shemley, 2 Douglas Road in Chelmsford. I do have a PowerPoint presentation also, but I wasn't sure when we were able to present that.
You can present it now, but you are under the same five-minute time presentation as any person standing at that table.
Okay, well, she got 10 minutes.
Right, but she was the presenter.
Okay, that's all I need to know. Thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, thank you.
No, no, no. Where is the PowerPoint presentation? Okay, can you load that up, please?
So, Mr. Moderator, a point of clarification, you probably shouldn't start the clock.
No, I'm going to start.
Okay.
Speaker's John Shemley, who runs and owns Trinity Ambulance, which is a private company that currently provides the ambulance services for the town. Charges the town $1 to do that, so the town is essentially given ambulance services for free, but any profits that-
And again, just for clarification, if, if there are questions that anyone here has of this particular speaker, you will certainly be able to ask them and elicit as much information as you require to make your decision on whether to fund this article.
And again, while he's getting that set up, this is not to establish a town-run fire, a town-run ambulance service.
That's perfect. Thank you.
To hire someone to look into that possibility.
Okay. Again, my name is John Shemley, President and CEO of Trinity EMS. Our previous presenter gave a scenario where the town of Chelmsford would realize a profit from a $1.6 to $2 million revenue stream. We're going to show you why that's not true. And one of the first things I'm going to show you is, at the bottom of your screen, the town of Westford required, this year and last year, approximately $500,000 from the general fund to the ambulance enterprise fund on an annual basis. Look at page 38 of the FY 2018 Annual Town Meeting Warrant, and you'll see that that's the case. But, given the parameters, I'm going to agree with her $1.8 million, $1.6 to $2 million revenue stream. Our volume indicates a $1.8 million is perfectly good. However, 5% annual fee for the ambulance billing company is about $99,000 in cost. So certainly, we have to subtract that. That gives you $1.7 million. Also, Trinity pays the town of Chelmsford every year $89,000, and it's climbing. I think next year, we give $93,000. You would lose that. That brings it to $1.6 million. The reality check here, folks, is that $1.6 million is where you have to jump off from as far as what your revenue is. Now, the cost for the town, this is taken right from the FY 2017 annual report, and it reflects the, the bottom eight firefighters' salaries. Average, $55,000, times 0.30% for benefits, health insurance, workers' comp, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. That is $72,000 for an average employee, times 17 new firefighters. Now, I know he said 16, but somebody's got to cover vacation and sick time and lost times. So we gave you another firefighter EMT. That brings it to $1.224 million. Subtract that to $1.612, and what you have is $388,000 after you take the firefighter staff. Now, we also have to hire a new firefighter captain at $146,000 with Bennys. We have to hire two dispatches, 7 to 3, 3 to 11. That's $134,000. You're going to need three new trucks, because you have to have a spare if you have two trucks on the road. So we're going to give you half a mechanic for that, because that's what we have. That's about $52,000. Total, $332,000. That brings your revenue stream down to $56,000. Fact. Now, that $56,000 can be reduced by adding cost of the vehicle, not, not staffing. We've already done that. We're down to $56,000. How about the three trucks annualized, amortized over, over 10 years? What we have here is $113,000. That's three trucks amortized at 20 grand a year for 10 years. The capital costs, $180,000. It costs $60,000 to equip a truck. So amortize that. $180,000 over 10 years, that's 18,000 bucks a year. Supplies are $35,000 a year. Band-aids, oxygen, splints, all the stuff we need, you know, to man the ambulance. Just from that slide right there, you're at a $57,000 loss. Other costs, we estimate at $125,000, workers' comp. One workers' comp claim can blow this out of the water. We have 25 per year, 25 per year, with five to seven people out of work. You need a compliance officer, very important. You can outsource the task, but not the responsibility. Gas and maintenance, vehicle and liability. We're estimating $125,000. That brings it to $182,000 loss.
You have one minute.
Thank you. Chelmsford personnel are not the issue. We love the fire department. The chiefs back there, we work very, very well together with the fire department. The problem is, 1,300 times a year, you're going to have no ambulance in town, because those two ambulances are busy. 300 times a year, you're going to have no ambulance in town with a patient waiting. If your loved one is waiting 20, 25, 30 minutes for a mutual aid ambulance from God knows where, how would you like that? The town of Barica last year responded to 157 mutual aid calls. You'll be doing the same thing. If you look at this here, this is a perfect example. On the 28th of September, you needed five trucks in the town. That's happened seven or eight times already this year. You needed five trucks in the town. Where are you going to get the last three? Because you already used it up, too. Where's, where's the last three coming from? This is a patient care issue. That's what this is. This is compassion. This is, you have somebody waiting 25 on this date. You have some, waiting 25 minutes for an ambulance, 30 minutes for an ambulance. With Trinity, never happens. Since 2010, we have never sent another company here. We cover every single call.
Okay, Mr. Shemley, I think you've made your point. We've, you've expended your five minutes, plus, I'm sure people will have questions for you and your speakers, if they want to. So, we have two people who you can seek information from, and Ms. Tuberty, you're first.
Kathy Tuberty, Precinct 1. Mr. Moderator, from you to our Selectmen. You were a little bit rushed at the end, so can you explain to us the process? Because I think what I heard you say was that after this year, or this study is complete, then it would go in, in and happen, but it wouldn't have to come back to town meeting and town. So could you talk through that process for us, please?
Yes. So, uh-
You can talk from that microphone right there, if you wish.
I can, but I would like the slide up to support what I'm saying.
That's fine. Can we, well, can we do that?
Or can we at least have a neutral slide up? Because I have information on all of mine. So, it was my timeline slide. It was six from the end.
Slide 45, in the package.
That's it. It's called Timeline. backward planning, our contract's up in 2020. We do have two one-year extensions that we could utilize if we see fit. However, we would need, if decided, the whole point of this committee is to have an open-ended committee, but people wanted to know why bring this up again, so I went and did all this research. So, we would need to purchase ambulances and have them on the ground with trained personnel for when our contract is up. I estimated with the consultants that a year of deliberation with the committee and the consultant, the neutral third party, the expert in setting this up, would take more or less a year. It would come back to town meeting in fall 2019. There would be an update at spring town meeting of 2019 to let you know where everything was and whether or not it was even worth continuing those second, you know, six months. So because this needs to be an open process, because this needs to be a clear, transparent process, there would be an update in the spring. The decision would happen in fall 2019. And then at that point, we would be looking to train and purchase trucks. And that would get us through to the summer of 2020 when our contract is up. So that is that. It's not January 2020. It's more like June 2020.
Okay, so then, if I'm understanding you, you're only looking for us to approve...
$55,000. $40,000 to do the master plan, which would investigate whether or not it's possible to consolidate a fire station, as well as whether or not an ambulance is feasible, plus whatever else the committee wants to add. It's an open-ended committee question. What can we do with our fire department? It's not a foregone conclusion. It's not a conclusion that must be reached. There's no leading question. The question is, what can we do? We need money. This is a source of revenue. We have trained EMTs. We run a non-transport ambulance that we pay for. These are expenses we have. So to make better use of our town resources, of our dedicated employees who live here and work here, how can we make better use of the resources we have? How can we be more efficient? How can we use the expertise of often decades in the field with decades of experience?
I think you've answered the question.
Okay. So my next question is, for the cost of the $55,000, I had thought we were focusing on ambulances.
That is...
But hang on. But then you were also talking about possibly moving fire stations, which kind of terrified me, having been through the debate of whipping the fire station around the corner that we went through. So you are looking at everything?
Everything. And so the way that happens, so for those of you who don't have, who did not check the 2007 study, if you ever played SimCity, where you had to place your fire station and you had the area of influence, and you could check and see where things were going to be covered, it's the same. It's just real. It's a real map with real streets and real population, and everything is real, and it's higher quality than your SimCity game was. And it's people who are trained to read this and to analyze the data. And I know it's a super simplification, but sometimes that's the best way to explain it. There is software. And if there is a way to have that same excellent coverage that we do now, but take away the cost of running five stations, because on average, towns this size don't usually have five stations. The reason we have them is because we used to have a railroad running through town. That railroad was decommissioned. That's how we got the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail. So because we don't need that redundancy for when a freight train is coming through, it may or may not be possible. We don't know. We can't make that determination yet, but it may or may not be possible to move things around and see if we can site one in a different place. And so that would be a cost to build, but you would also save the cost on maintaining an older building, possibly. Again, this is the sort of thing that you need a consultant who has financial and emotional distance from the issue to determine.
Okay. And then just a comment. You can start my clock, but it'll be way less than five minutes. I find it hard to believe that to do all of that in that short period of time for $55,000, it just does not seem like a realistic cost. I don't think that the quality of what you're going to look for, you expect, is going to happen in a $55,000 bill. Hang on. I also think that you're giving a little bit of disservice to a bunch of the Trinity folks that actually live in Chelmsford and give with their heart and soul in Chelmsford. So I do want to give credit. There are wonderful people all over town that are first responders, including ambulance, that live in town and care for the town. So I just think that you are selling yourself a little short on the cost that it's going to be, and I think that you're not quite accurate in your costs of what it's actually going to cost us to get there. In long term, we might be able to make the money that you're proposing, but those first 10 years would be horribly expensive.
That's why I called...
Hold on, there's no question before you to respond to.
That was my comment. Yeah, thank you.
That's why I called 7.
Oh, no, no, you're out of order. If there's a question, you certainly can respond. If you want to queue up with everybody else, you can make comments, but you're not to debate from where you are. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator?
Doug Bruce, Precinct 9. Mr. Moderator, if you'd please reset the clock. Let me just first start out by saying I fully support the idea of a study for a look at our fire stations. I believe our fire stations, with our five stations placed 40, 50, even 60 years ago, does deserve another look at, given the way our community has changed over these many years. With respect to the ambulance issue, I was doing some of my own research over the weekend, which called, this was already pointed out in a previous speaker, but I have here the Westford FY 19 Finance Committee Report, page 38, which was referenced earlier, showing a $500,000 deficit of the ambulance service in Westford that was covered through their general fund. In FY 18, they're looking at having to cover $579,000, an increase of 15 to 20%. Westford did outsource the billing for the fire department. This is Westford Fire Department's billing policy. They do work with an outsourced agency. The agency, they require the agency to do four billings, for late billings. At 135 days, it's farmed out to a collection agency. So I just worry about Chelmsford Emergency Services being in the business of relying on our emergency services as a revenue generating machine. That seems to go against kind of some of the foundational issues that fire departments were originally insourced to show. And just to close out here, in FY 17, Westford had to discharge $315,000 of uncollectible debt. What would that do to our general stabilization fund in Chelmsford? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Sam Poulton, Precinct 8. I have some questions, and I'll start with a question to the maker of the motion. How much does Chelmsford currently pay for ambulance services under the contract that you're referring?
We don't, because it is a service provider. So the monies paid to an ambulance are out of health insurance, the same as any other service provider would be.
I'm sorry. Maybe I'll ask the question more simply. How much does Chelmsford pay for ambulance services? The town, not the people, the town.
The town doesn't pay for ambulance services. People pay out of their health insurance.
I guess the answer is Chelmsford pays nothing for ambulance services. Is that correct?
I guess so.
Does Chelmsford pay for ambulance services?
We pay, we have a non-transport ambulance. We run a non-transport ambulance, and we do not collect fees for that. I don't actually know what the cost of that individual item is.
I'll direct my question, if I may, to Mr. Shemley.
Go ahead.
Mr. Shemley, does Chelmsford pay for your services?
No.
Thank you. Does Chelmsford receive any money for the private ambulance service?
It receives a payback for the dispatch service when dispatch calls the ambulance provider.
Mr. Shemley...
I'm sorry, Sam, I'm answering your question. They get $80,000 back for dispatch.
Mr. Shemley, does Chelmsford receive money from, you're the ambulance provider, I'm assuming, Trinity EMS?
Yes.
Does Chelmsford receive money from you?
Yes. We have negotiated a contract with the town manager to pay this year $89,000, and we have a 5% escalator through 2020. I think next year, we're giving the town something like $92,000 or $93,000. Yes, the answer's yes.
Is that payment a flat fee, or is it based on anything? If you lose money, does Chelmsford get paid?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. And what was the amount?
That was asked and answered.
I'm sorry?
He already answered. $89,000.
And is that a fixed amount?
Yes.
Okay.
It's fixed this year, Sam.
Does it go up every year?
That's correct.
I've been studying this, and I'm just interested in who wrote the slides?
Me.
You wrote the slides.
Now, are you asking questions still?
I'm going to ask a question.
Okay.
Was it your intention to say things like, "We may not be able to close a station if we add ambulances, which may cover the costs of keeping a station open"?
It's a possibility. I wanted to cover all the possibilities that a committee with a properly open goal and open-ended question could find. So given discussions I have had with people who have asked questions, I did try to cover a lot of frequently asked questions in these slides.
On that same slide, new firehouse costs $4 million, savings of closing one.
Less, less savings.
I am confused. I'm asking, the question is, what does that mean?
Less the savings. That's a minus sign. So a new firehouse, if we were to build a new one and consolidate, if we were to go from five to three, we would close two, but, and this is all hypotheticals, I have no idea what would work because I have not seen plots. But if we were to go to three, we would then not be maintaining those extra two. If we had to build a new one to replace those two, that, a new firehouse costs approximately $4 million. So if we were able to relocate and consolidate and combine and have the same coverage, it would cost about $4 million to build a new house, however, we would then not be maintaining two older buildings.
I guess one last question, because I'm sure the intent of the slides wasn't to confuse or present an opinion, but it certainly confused me. The town meeting vote was to keep the stations open and then come back with a revisit. What was the genesis of expanding that mandate to include emergency medical services? The mandate was to come back and talk about fire stations. What was the, how did ambulances get in here?
Because for a town this size, and private ambulance service has a place, but at a certain point, the cost, the cost of running your own ambulance is borne out by the income you take in from the insurance companies. So at a certain number of transports per year, it makes sense to have your own ambulances. When you are paying for EMTs for all of your firefighters, all of your certifications, it makes sense to use the resources you have in town and to make better use of your existing resources. So looking at the entire situation as a holistic department, looking at the modern role of the fire department, where they are making 4,000 medical calls a year, looking at the fact that we already run a non-transport ambulance and all of its costs, it made sense to look into whether or not a transport ambulance could alleviate any of the problems or make any kind of difference. And it can, in my opinion. I came at it as knowing nothing. I was like...
I'm sorry. Did someone call out a point of honor? I was tied up.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
I keep hearing a lot of opinion, and I understand these questions, and we want to fund this study, it will help us understand all various, is it all various aspects? So aren't we going to follow a field, is it a simple question here? Do we want to fund this study? Yes.
Go ahead, Mr. Poulton.
Yes, I was trying to get answers to questions. I'll reserve my arguments till later. I've gotten the answers I asked for.
Thank you.
Johanna Shaw, Precinct 9. Actually, she kind of stole my thunder. I've been waiting up here to say that I felt like we're going pretty far afield. Right now, if I'm following everything correctly, what we have to work off of is research that Emily put a lot of thought and time and effort into, but it's not a comprehensive study. And we have studies that have been referenced from, I think it was 11 and 20-plus years ago, and information from other towns that aren't Chelmsford. So it seems to me that the question in front of us is just, will we put the money in to investigate fully something that could potentially be a revenue source for a town that we just said, an hour, half hour ago, however long, that we have a deficit? It doesn't seem like it should be that difficult of a decision to put a strong effort into finding a potential revenue stream. We're not binding ourselves to anything. We're just investigating. Thank you.
Thank you.
Karen Utech, Precinct 5. I'd like to ask the body to vote against this. Those of us who've been around a long time, as we've talked about, have remembered studying ambulances over and over again. We don't need to study it. It's not the right thing for us to do. We are a town government. Town government should not be in the business of competing with local businesses. This is not a situation where we're saying, "We're taking something, and we're not sure if it can be privatized." It absolutely can. It works fabulous. We have a good system. We're not looking for new, I mean, if we're looking for new revenue sources, we could run a restaurant, or we could have our firefighters take calls while they're sitting in the fire stations. Those are all revenue sources, but we're not a business. We should not be in the business of being a business. Excuse me, my mouth has gone dry. My concern is that there's all this discussion about using resources we already have, but that's not what we're suggesting here. We have firefighters who are EMTs, and we have EMTs. They both come to a call. You have two choices. You either just send the firefighter and say, "Now you have a firefighter and an EMT", in which case you have reduced the number of responders by one, or you send your EMT firefighter and your regular firefighter, in which case all you are doing is adding the training of firefighting to your EMTs. That's what we're talking about. So I just think ultimately, this is not the right thing for us to do, and I don't want to waste $50,000 to determine that. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Kit Harbison, Precinct 7. I am urging you to vote for this study. Just the simple discussion has brought a lot of emotion and passion out on both sides, and it's information that we don't really have corroborated. Things have changed in town since the last ambulance study was done. I've lived here long enough to have been through at least two. It's not a given that we'll come out this time that we don't need private service or that we should bring it in-house. I think we need to look at the situation the way it currently is, look forward 10, 20 years down the road about what might happen, and definitely proceed with a more neutral, unbiased, objective point of view. I understand it was important, Emily, to get the research, but I think it's unfortunate that so much of it was... Emily, to get the research, but I think it's unfortunate that so much of it was presented with a decision already made. And I think it's brought up, I think it's sort of misrepresented the purpose of funding the study, which is to proceed with an open slate. That's it.
Thank you.
Glenn Diggs, 220 Wellman Avenue. I'm also the chairman of the Board of Selectmen. I'd like to kind of step back and kind of give you an overview of this whole situation rather than get kind of in the minutia of the details. First of all, the idea for this really was three parts, not two parts in its original state. It was for looking at the ambulance, whether it should be brought in-house, whether or not there should be a relocation, closing of any fire stations, and also if the dispatch should be handed outside and not managed by the town as it is now. We decided that the dispatch issue could be an issue all by itself and therefore it was within the purview of the Board of Selectmen to vote on that. After a very open debate over many weeks, we decided that we would keep the dispatch in the town as it is now, even though it probably could have saved the town some monies if it had gone to regionalization. However, the service was good and we decided to do it that way. In this case, you know, you need to focus on the presentation by John Souza, which said that in the next few years, the town is going to operate at a deficit. And that was the key word, deficit. We have not operated at a deficit. And therefore, the Board of Selectmen is trying to keep an open view of how we can create monies so that we are not operating at a deficit. The Board of Selectmen set a course that we were very pro to economic development, trying to bring additional monies into town. But that's a long course. It takes years. It should have been started years ago, but you need to start at some point and we started in the last couple of years. And it's starting to bring some fruit, but we still have a long way to go. So, we looked at this as an option of perhaps other towns have their own ambulance service in town and perhaps there is monies to be made. Maybe not, you know, but, you know, with no disrespect to Mr. Chumley and Trinity, I think he runs a quality business and I don't think anyone would find fault with the services he provides for the town. But you have to understand, any businessman who comes before us, who's doing business for the town, would naturally point to his business being very good for the town. And maybe the information he provided is 100% accurate, maybe not so, but that's the purpose of an independent study. That would include both townspeople, people in the town government, and an independent group which would look at it with an open eye. Because eventually, if it said that we should take the ambulance in-house, we would have to come back to town meeting and you would want to see data and facts and solid information that says why we should do it, not just a group of townspeople who looked at it, which is what the past studies were. So, that's why we're doing it. We're looking at trying to create money. Maybe this is not the right way to go, but the study has to be done. We gave $220,000 to the school department to do an analysis of a feasibility study of where their facility should go into the future. We gave about $30,000 to the Economic Development Committee to study what we should do in terms of bringing a branded program and marketing to try to create more economic development and bring more money into town. So, the Board of Selectmen is asking $55,000, not so much to spend money, but to investigate how we could make money. And that's what it's about. You know, the town turned, the town turned down marijuana, which would have been $200,000 to the town, which would cover some deficit, but that's, the town meeting decides on those issues. But this is just about bringing a study together so that you can make an informed decision. And that's what it's about, being informed and enlightened in terms of where we should go. The town, you know, had a situation where the firefighters in the last arbitration, part of that arbitration was that the, one of the stations had to have three people instead of two people.
You have one minute.
That decision cost the town several hundred thousand dollars. If the next arbitration comes back and it says that you have to put another person at another station, each one of those is about four people. So, you can grow the payroll by 20 people. And that's an enormous amount of money that isn't accounted for in John Souza's statistics of that we're going to operate in a deficit. So, we're here to ask the money strictly to do an independent study with involvement by town management and by residents who would like to be on the committee, to find out whether or not it is possible to save money. And I think it's a reasonable request and I would hope that you would vote for it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Kathy Duffett, Precinct 7. I'm a member of the Finance Committee. I voted in favor of this article when we met earlier this evening because it was presented that it was a, we were going to do a study and it was going to be a third-party person who was going to come back with an objective point of view with statistics and numbers so that an appropriate decision could be made going forward. What I'd like to say is, I feel like this, I'm repeating people, that this conversation has gone somewhat around the bend with the focus being on the ambulance. I would like to remind people that the initial objective was the fire station. And given our financial situation, would we have to close a fire station? I, for one, would like to know that we have the adequate number of fire stations in the right locations and they are staffed appropriately. And if we have to come make a decision about closing a fire station, I believe that we should have all of the data. And if I were going to be a Board of Selectmen or someone else making a decision, I would say, "Well, while you're looking at it, if you would like to, if you would like to include the ambulance service to find out if that would be profitable, non-profitable, or what the actual data is, this would be a good time to do it. As a pragmatic sense, do a study and find out." I cast a certain amount of doubt as to whether it would be this revenue generating stream or if it would be profitable or not, but I allow that we could do a independent, non-judgmental study, but we want to make sure about the fire department. The fire department and those stations are the most important thing for the safety of this town. And if you're going to make the Selectmen make a decision, you better give them the ability to have the information to make the decision. So, vote for this so that we can get the study done and then we will have data, not emotion, to protect our community and our citizens. So, I encourage a vote yes. And I also want to thank Mr. Chumley for all the things he has done for this community.
Thank you.
Marlene Cody, Precinct 4. I have some questions. How do we know it's going to cost $55,000 for the study?
Because seven consulting firms gave that number.
And how is the consulting firm going to be chosen?
Well, so you would put out a bid for RFPs, for official bids, and then you form the committee and then the committee goes through the RFPs and see which one, which firm they like the best.
So, the Selectmen put out a request for an RFP, is that right?
The town, or the committee does.
So, the committee would be formed first?
Yes, and then the committee sorts through the RFP. So, I don't know whether it would be more expedient to have the town put out the RFP and then have the committee go through them. I don't know which is the most efficient use of time, but...
So, it's a bidding process?
It is a bidding process, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Will Wagner, Precinct 8. Just a few quick questions and then some comments. First question is, the study or the committee that's going to be formed, what is their specific charter?
To investigate whether or not, and...
Well, let me...
We hadn't hammered out the language, but the goal is...
I believe that's the point. You haven't hammered out the language and that's part of the problem here. You can start the clock, sir. Part of the problem here is we've gone very far afield. We've focused almost entirely on the concept of bringing ambulance in-house, whether that's a good idea or not, whether it would make us money, lose us money, break us even. That's something for the study, for the third-party to determine. And I think that we've missed the point of the article here. The point of the article here is to establish a committee with a specific charter that has yet to be determined, but could be broad, could say, "We'd like you to investigate the fire and safety in the town" and encompass everything within that. But we don't have that charter in front of us and the presentation that was given to us was all about the ambulance. And I think that's part of the problem here because this isn't about the ambulance. As some of the previous speakers said, this is about the fire stations. This is about the safety of the town. This is about whether Trinity ends up being a better choice than bringing it in-house. And that could very well be one of the solutions if ambulances are even included in it. If they take a look at it and say, "That's right off the table because it's not good", then things stay as they are and we can focus on the fire stations themselves. But I'd really like to bring it back to the actual article, ignoring much of the presentation, and say, "This article is to allocate $55,000 to hire a third-party to come in and work with an established committee which will have a charter established by the Board of Selectmen. That charter can be as specific, as narrow, or as wide as the Board of Selectmen sees fit, but does not have to include the ambulance, may include the ambulance, or may not." My one fear is, as the original speaker said, that $55,000 may not be enough for this whole study to be completed, but I think it's a good start. I mean, we do need a new study. We do need a third-party to come in and analyze the safety in the town because with the current fire stations, we're hemorrhaging. We're always looking for money to fill the spots. We're looking for money to keep this fire station open or close that fire station. And we need to figure out for the safety of our town, for the safety of the people in our town, what is the best way that the town and the firefighters in this town who do an awesome job, but how they can continue to serve the town in the best manner possible. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes? Sure. Can you put the article on the screen, please? It should be in your book as well. Well, that's... There it is. Mr. Polton?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I would like to offer an amendment. I have it in writing.
Can we, can you bring it up to us and so we can see it, so town council can look at it? And also it could be presented to, so that it can be put up on the screen?
For those of you watching at home, this is Kelly Biede for Chelmsford Telemedia. The actual article is a outcome of a deferred decision at the last town meeting as to whether or not we were going to close one of the fire stations in town, one of the five we had. The decision was then made to use money from our stabilization fund to keep those five stations going until we could, in a sober way, assess whether or not the five were still warranted, given the distribution in town and so forth. And as has been pointed out, the presentation by Emily Antle of the Board of Selectmen seemed to be all about the possibility of using an in-house, in-town ambulance service to provide a source of revenue for the town. And as you can see from the article here, that the focus primarily was to have been about the distribution of the fire stations. In any case, several of the speakers have pointed out, let's do the study and see what an independent assessment would provide, whether or not it would be cost-effective for the town to do it itself, as the Board of Selectmen presentation indicates or at least hinted, or whether it would be actually a possible deficit situation as we're seeing in the town of Westford to the tune of about roughly a half million dollars a year. John Kroll is going to speak to the viability of Sam Polton's proposed amendment. Earlier, in the last year, so the town meeting representatives have funded more than a couple of studies, feasibility studies, if you want to call them that. And this is just one more of those. On paper, it looks very simple. Let's have a study by an independent expert of the situation and see what, where the chips might fall. You can see there at the moderator's desk, a lot of huddling. Part of the issue here is that the town council needs to rule whether the amendment that Sam is proposing, Mr. Polton is proposing, falls within the purview of the article.
Yes. Okay, just so the people know what's going on, Mr. Polton's motion and Mr. Clancy's, both of their amendments are very similar. To make things quicker for town meeting, Mr. Polton has generously agreed to use the language that Mr. Clancy has...
Not exactly. Allow me to...
Go ahead.
Yes. It appears while they're doing that, great minds run in the same trough. Mr. Clancy and I had very similar motions. I've agreed to the language Mr. Clancy had used for part of it. He has agreed to the language I used for part of it. Together, I think we have one terrific amendment. And as soon as we get it all worked out, we will present it to you.
It's almost worked out.
The best amendment ever presented at town meeting, no doubt. In any case, we're on the fifth article of our 23 article warrant. This, obviously, these are important topics, both this one and the previous one having to do with the establishment of a stormwater division within the Department of Public Works. Both have major implications for the town's future costs.
Okay, so just one second, please.
As I was saying, both of these have major implications from the standpoint of personnel and equipment costs. In the case of the stormwater management system, which is being mandated by the Environmental Protection Agency, we would need a whole new group of DPW personnel to maintain storm drains, clean them out, sweep the streets more regularly, and have the equipment to do that. Here, in the case of the ambulance service, we would need to buy the ambulances and to staff them. One of the points that John Chumley made is that the...
So, while we're waiting, I'd like to point out that Chelmsford Telemedia graciously put a welcome mat for anyone who's speaking at the podium down there, which is designed, I think, to make it more comfortable for the people standing up there and speaking. I'm of two minds about it. I'd like you to be comfortable, but I don't want you to be too comfortable. I also want to point out that they didn't have one for me. So, just so you know.
John?
Yes.
Right here.
Yes.
Here.
Donna.
Is it electrified?
Why don't you try it?
Donna Farley just asked whether the new mat in front of the microphones is electrified or not. In any case, the prospect of starting an in-house ambulance service...
Town council indicated that if it were, we still wouldn't be on Article 5, so... I wish I could have taken credit for that, but...
As we wait for the...
So...
...of the amendment.
This is one of the advantages to presenting an amendment to us before the meeting or before the article is presented so that we... before the article is presented, so that we can have an opportunity to do this. But it is what it is, and we appreciate your patience. And I think that they will be...somebody will be presenting it, and it will be on the screen before you momentarily, if not already. Okay.
In an effort to help ensure passage, I'm gonna let the esteemed member of the Board of Selectmen speak for us. A finance committee?
No.
Hopefully. The esteemed member of the finance committee will speak for both of us. We both sincerely hope you'll support this.
So in an effort to ease the consternation that we have this evening, and also to actually get accomplished what we initially plotted out to do, we want to do a study of the fire stations. We want to make sure that it's properly positioned and that we have a full and understanding independent third-party consultant come in and do so. Those are Sam's additional words to striking the words, "Establish a municipal emergency ambulance service," and whether the town should. So this would simply be a study by independent third-party as to whether the town should consolidate its fire stations. That's it.
So that...
No, he can't strike.
Oh, there was supposed to be...there was supposed to be stricken...
So the problem is that, as John has informed me, he cannot strike...show the strike-through language on that slide.
So why don't you...can you highlight that? Vivian, can you highlight that in like yellow or something so that they can see the language that's being stricken? Because there is language being stricken, which you don't see on that screen.
Are they saying they couldn't strike consolidation? They could have struck the whole thing, so why is it stricken?
Why don't you read...why don't you read the changes anyways, out loud?
Sure. I'll have the whole article. So the changes would be to strike...well, actually, first it would be after hiring to say an independent third-party...
Read...read...
I don't have the full article in front of me.
Can you read that to the crowd?
Yeah.
I will certainly do that, once I have the article in front of me. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, go ahead. Do you have it?
So the title needs to be adjusted as well to the article. To take out municipal ambulance...oh, ambulance, emergency ambulance. So, no. So the new article, after municipal emergency ambulance and is removed from the title, is to state, "I move that the town transfer $55,000 from free cash to be expended by the Board of Selectmen, open perenns, in conjunction with the creation of an ad hoc public safety study committee, closed perenns, for the purpose of hiring an independent third-party consultant to examine whether the town should consolidate its fire stations." So the only change that needs to be made to that slide right now is the fact that it still says municipal emergency ambulance and in the title.
Okay, but the title...
I know the title is not significant to the actual wording of the warrant article, but people have brought it to my attention that it says that.
Okay. So, folks, here's what we've got in front of us now. We have an amendment which basically limits the study to...
Fire station consolidation.
By an independent third-party consultant. And that's what's been presented as a motion, and it's an amendment. That is debatable, if anyone wishes to debate that. If no one wishes to debate that, then we will vote on the amendment. Go ahead.
Good evening. David Hohl, 14 Irland Road. Can I ask a question of the original presenter of the article?
Sure.
Ms. Antle, is there a reason why the ambulance and the fire station was all in this original amendment, to begin with?
Yes. It's because if you look at closing stations...first of all, the ambulance is a revenue source. But if you look at closing stations and don't take into account whether or not we might ever want to move, we might not end up...we might not have the infrastructure needed to have an ambulance. And so when you look at neighboring towns that don't have ambulance service that I spoke with, they don't actually have the houses to hold ambulances. The other thing is, is that I was looking at our non-transport ambulance, and because we're already running an ambulance and not getting any money from it, it just...it doesn't make sense. Like, financially, it doesn't make sense.
Okay, you answered the question, I think.
I guess as kind of a follow-up question to that, is it even feasible to think that an independent consultant could examine all of these things without taking a picture approach?
Mr. Hohl, with all due respect, there is an amendment that takes all of the ambulance aspect of it.
Can I comment on the amendment, then?
Absolutely. That's why I thought you were gonna speak.
All right, well, I've been waiting up here, so I was kind of getting a little tired. Very comfortable mat, by the way. So as far as the amendment goes, I would urge you all to vote no on this amendment. I think the intent of the original article was to take an honest look, an unbiased look at some of the problems that we presented at the last town meeting. The reason that we're up here, and me as a representative of the Fire Department, is because we came before you in the spring with a safety issue. And I know somebody else talked about that earlier, asking about looking at data and looking at the appropriate way to staff fire stations. Well, I'm here to tell you that we are unequivocally staffed inappropriately right now. We have two firefighters at a fire station, and that is completely below any national safety standards. I'm not here to argue whether we should have an ambulance, whether we should close stations. That's not for me to decide. I'm not an expert on these things, and I'm also not independent, just like Mr. Chumley's not independent. He clearly has an agenda here tonight. He's clearly of a private interest.
Okay, okay. Okay. No, you can't do that, Mr. Hohl.
I apologize for that. But the whole point of this is to look at this objectively and to have input from somebody who's not attached to it. Let somebody that's an expert look at whether this is gonna make money. The fact that we're talking about if it's gonna make money...
Okay, but that's...that's not...why don't you argue...I understand you're arguing...
I'm starting to get there, I'm sorry. I'm a little verbose. So the issue is, if we take this off of the table right now, then we put this to bed. We're talking about a potential revenue source, not a guaranteed revenue source, not a loss. The only way that we're ever gonna find out that information and to figure this out once and for all is to have somebody that's unbiased take a look at this. And then, I understand the connections that everybody has. I understand that Trinity is a great organization, and I wouldn't talk bad about them either. But the fact of the matter is, if we don't look at this...
Mr. Moderator, start the clock.
Yeah, you can start the clock. I'll be down in a minute.
Well, I didn't know you were...
Thank you. So just to kind of conclude here, because I think that it's vital that we look at this as a big-picture item, because our safety concerns are still valid. They're still there. They're still gonna be there if we don't figure out a way to fix this. And just by, you know, closing a station, or...I don't know that the town's gonna get there without looking at everything as a whole. And that's it. And I apologize if I went out of order there, but...
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Brian Latina, Precinct 4. As you recall, Springtown Meeting, we were a quarter million dollars short due to an arbitration situation with the Fire Department that was partially caused by an outside third-party fire chief that was the arbitrator, who happened to have the same number of firemen on his truck. So he added one fireman to one of our trucks, cost us a quarter million dollars, give or take. So we looked at a solution of closing the South Fire Station, which, by the way, if you remember, has been closed before. We have five fire stations in town, seems like a lot. History on that is probably really important to look at. We have done a fire study that positioned the buildings exactly right and looked at the time it takes to get to your house. Everybody in this room can supposedly can have a fireman at your house in four minutes, I think is the standard that we're using right now, today. This study that personally I asked Springtown Meeting to consider almost six months ago was to look at the fire stations and consider a quarter million dollars spent to hold one open for one year was probably a good buy because we had a two-week window to make that decision. And we made the decision to staff all five fire stations this year. We didn't talk about ambulance more generating more revenue and all the other things you could do. We talked about looking at fire stations to get somebody to your house in four minutes. Can you or can't you do it? And is it necessary? Is that the world we're living in? Hundred years ago, we put five fire stations out there because of where the fire plugs were. The long log...sorry, we're not supposed to talk about things beyond 20 years, or is that okay?
Let's not be facetious.
A hundred years ago, we put those fire stations in position because we're in agricultural area and it took a long time to get from point A to point B. You can get on the highway now. Maybe the ideal location is by the McCarthy School now. Maybe we need two, three, whatever. 2007's report's probably pretty good, but we need to look at that again. We did position a station. We spent a ton of money for it. It's on top of another sandy hill. We designed it, Town Meeting saw it, at the bottom of the hill with a back exit. We paid a lot more money to put it on top, cost an extra million bucks or so. It is what it is. It's in position where it is. The other four stations need to be considered. Do we need them? If you live in Lawrence, in the past few months, yeah, you need them. Could we use some more of these guys? When Lawrence caught fire, yes, they could have. Houses burned, people died. Town of Chelmsford needs to look at a study for our fire station locations, and keep in mind, it's about fire stations. It's not about generating revenue, because this is a really expensive thing to do. But it keeps your family alive. It has somebody come in if there's a heart attack. Those guys are there in four minutes. They'll run into your house, whether there's only two, which isn't allowed, or the backup truck hasn't quite got there, they still come into your house. Okay? We need to look at that. We need to consider the fact that we have outlying areas, Billrica, Westford, Lowell, Carlisle to some degree, that can also get to our areas. So if the South Station's closed, Carlisle might be able to get there. Billrica's four minutes from our center station, folks, on the highway. Those things need to be looked at. And the other thing to consider is the fact that we've started a build-out, second to Nun, maybe second to Billrica, and those buildings arguably will have fire extinguishing systems in them, but there's gonna be a ton more people having medical calls. We need to look at the stations for fire safety, and then if somebody wants to later on, look at an ambulance service. God bless them, that's a heck of a business. It's difficult to do. I think there were 16 Trinity ambulances that ended up in Lawrence. Our guys were still backed up here. I bet every one of them wanted to be there, but we still had to keep a footprint in Chelmsford. And I gotta tell you, if a couple of ambulances are out of town, who's gonna come in? We've got a station...we've got a Trinity station. It almost hit me, by the way. There's a skinny street next to the station. The ambulance came straight at me at town meeting tonight. I had to pull over around cars...there should be no parking on that street, Mr. Moderator, so that those ambulances can get passed.
You've got 20 seconds.
Chelmsford ought to look at that. We ought to consider the fact that these stations were antiquated in their locations, and maybe it's time to put two or three out there. Please vote on this amendment, and then we'll kill the other one. Thank you.
Thank you.
John Plunkett, Precinct 4. Just a quick question. Now that we're seeming to be removing a huge scope of this amendment with the change, is $55,000 actually necessary, seeing that that's a huge part of the scope?
No, it's the same cost, because it's $40,000 to do a master plan, and it's $15,000 to do a strategic action plan to implement whatever the committee decides.
So despite reducing the scope, it would not lower...
No, because there's a base cost to doing it, because there's a minimum...like, you have to pay somebody to come and do a study. So it's $40,000 to do a study, and that can encompass a whole lot of range. You might be able to knock off a couple thousand. But again, like, I'm speculating here, and I'm going off of what seven different companies told me. That's the cost. And that's the high end. We didn't...we wanted to return money rather than come back and ask for like fiddly bits. So, but it's 15,000 is a strategic action plan. So if we end up looking at closing three stations, or whatever it is, and rebuilding two, then you need a strategic action plan. You need a roadmap of how to get there and how to lay out the next five or 10 years. So that's what 15,000 is for, and the 40,000 is for the actual study.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Glenn Diggs, 220 Womond Avenue, also Chairman of the Board of Selectmen. I'd like to address this amendment. First of all, when polled on the Board of Selectmen's position on the article, I had indicated it was three to two in favor. Part of the reason it was only three to two was the same thing that's up on the board now, whether or not it should be separate articles. Again, as I said earlier, it originally was three parts. We decided to take one part out because we felt it could be. But there is an integration between the ambulance business and also the fire station issue. If it's decided that the fire stations, one or more, should close, and you don't have the ambulance issue in front of you, then where are you gonna put the ambulances if you decide that you want to include the ambulance business? So they're interconnected. But again, you know, the Board of Selectmen doesn't have the answers on this. Nobody does. We're trying to find the answers, and the Town Meeting deserves independent answers, and that's what we're trying to solve. So if the feeling is that, you know, we should kill the ambulance business because in some ways it seems to be a sacred cow, then by all means, it's your right to do so. But I think they should both go forward as it is, but we would be happy to work with whatever the Town Meeting decides if they want to split it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Manager.
Yeah, Mr. Moderator, start the clock, please.
You're on.
I just want to offer some thoughts and for the Town Meeting to consider. I've been here 12 years. I bent through the fire station study last time, as well as the construction of the new station. I've also been through the arbitration, and I've also consulted with the fire chief and the police chief on this matter. Here's the concerns I have. The issue of the fire station location, as you recall, I requested that the town consider the closure of the fire station in the spring for budgeting purposes. And that was rejected by Town Meeting because of response time. When we did the study 10 years ago, as was noted earlier, we looked at response time. And in order to meet the obligation of having the four-minute response time anywhere in the community, we needed to maintain the five stations. That was done, that was done exhaustively. That's why we kept the five stations. Obviously, we moved the center station slightly over to the town offices, and that was a monetary issue, because it was significantly less expensive to build at that location. The town's network of roadways hasn't changed significantly in 10 years. Therefore, if your goal is response, consolidating the stations isn't gonna give you that response. You don't need to spend $55,000. If your goal is to consolidate, we identified the location, the current DPW facility on Richardson Road. You could close the North Station, which is our oldest station, as well as the Roberts Field Station, and place one station there. We own the land. I know how Chelmsford works. It's all about the money, right? And it's about public safety. So if your goal is public safety and response, don't close the station. But if your goal is to find the most cost-effective solution, that's been identified. That would be that location on Richardson Road. We know, as was stated earlier by the presenter, to build it, and we look at other communities, to build a satellite fire station is $4 million. Amortize that over 20 years for your cost savings to make it up. And then if you're gonna consolidate to three, then you're gonna need another $4 million to consolidate East and South at another location, or you close one of those. But again, if the definition is response time, then that's not your standard. The issue of the ambulance, in my mind, is a red herring. The issue in terms of response capability for the Fire Department. You heard the arbitration award. It was that we weren't staffing the fire apparatus with four firefighters, which is the national standard. And the arbitrator said, "Well, we'll incrementally get you there by having at least one of the stations have three." Running an ambulance with 18 firefighters runs you out with an ambulance. It doesn't give you a single additional firefighter to fight a structure fire. So let's not try to use the argument that by adding the ambulance, we can solve the fire staffing needs. That doesn't work. Because are you running an ambulance person, or are you running a firefighter person? Because when the fire call comes in, you're gonna send the ambulance to the fire scene. They're not going into the building, because they're gonna sit there to treat people who may be injured or hurt, or the firefighters who go into the building, their care and responsibility. And also, if you're running the two ambulances, and as was noted earlier, they're in use, well, they're of no use... So the problem has become is we've mixed items into an integration that isn't realistic in terms of the objectives of the town. If the objective's of firefighter safety, then you need to keep the staffing levels of higher per person at the stations in order for the firefighter's safety. If the issue is residence response time, then you've got to keep the five stations open. And the other thing is, we did the study, final comment, we did the study 10 years ago. It didn't cost us $55,000 to do the station configurations consolidation. So I don't believe that total amount is necessary, because what they do is they do computer simulation models. They look at where your medical calls are, and we have all that data that's reported to us monthly. Then they look at where your stations are, and they run models showing the traffic congestion and the response times at certain hours of the day. So again, I'm not speaking in favor or against, but I'm trying to give you the input from myself and in talking to the chiefs about this article. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Okay.
Tom Moran, Precinct 8. One item that has not come up during the debate about fire stations, and by the way, I applaud the town manager, response time is very much the issue when you close fire stations. Well, we did close the West Fire Station for almost two years, and I went to all the fire stations, and I recorded the response times. And have you considered the fact that as you vote tonight, if they close a fire station, it could be yours? The people who lived in the area of the West Fire Station couldn't get anybody to buy their house. They had a big closure sign on it. And you ought to think, you may be voting to close your own tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brian Latina, Precinct 4. Mr. Moderator, through to Mr. Chumley of Trinity. Can I ask a question? If we closed a fire station, would the current Trinity ambulance service consider using that station as a location for an ambulance or two?
Yes.
You would consider that?
And in some cases, there are towns that would see rent or lease revenue from that station, yes.
Okay. And you have already positioned yourself in town in different locations. I noticed an ambulance chasing me down Turnpike today, and the light turned red, and 10 cars passed in front of the red light. So Turnpike Road has an ambulance bay in it now?
Yes.
Okay.
The old Grine Cove building. That's a temporary building while we build out our new space right behind the old Eastern Bank building across the street from St. Mary's Church. We're building a brand-new base there.
Okay. And, Mr. Moderator, the model for the Andover Fire Ambulance Service, as I was told before last town meeting, was that when the ambulance arrives at a fire scene, those men on that or women on that ambulance service can act as firemen. Very often, if there's enough personnel there, they would act as ambulance operators and stand by. But the chief assured me that in a case of a fire where a couple of firemen are there and they can't enter the structure, that these ambulance-capable firemen do, in fact, act as firemen. Certainly on a medical scene, they act as ambulance attendants as well. So there's models. It's not black and white, and they are first firemen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Glenn Thornt, Precinct 5. I hope we can vote on this sometime soon. This would be good. With regard to the amendment, I think it's been made abundantly clear that the way you investigate the amount of time it's required to get from a fire station to a home that needs fire service, if we'll call it that, has been studied, can be studied for a lot less than that dollar amount. So I would recommend voting down the amendment. Too much money for too little information that doesn't add a lot to the town, because for me, and I don't know about you, but for me, response time is the issue. There is no other issue. If you can't get to my house fast enough, it's the wrong answer. If I can't get to your house fast enough, it's the wrong answer. So response time is the issue, and so closing, studying down what fire stations we should close, what we should consolidate, should be done separately and not through this motion with this money, which is way too much. So when this is voted down, we go back to the main issue, which is a conglomerated request for $55,000, mixing two complex issues, one of which I've already spoken about. So I'm going to vote down the original motion after we vote down the amendment.
Thank you. Nobody else?
We have reached saturation.
Okay. So we're going to be voting on the amendment first. And if that passes, then we go on to the next article. If that fails, then we go on to the original article. So we're going to vote on the amendment, which basically takes out the ambulance portion. Yes?
Whether the amendment passes or fails, we're going back to vote on the amended article.
Well, if it passes, then you've already taken out the language that would be an indication that people don't want the ambulance.
As one of the makers of the amendment, the intent of the amendment was to have town meeting vote yes or no on a study about fire stations.
Well, it's all moot anyways, because the amendment is failing. So now we're going to be going...
With all due respect...
I'm listening.
I believe the moderator created a false impression as to what we were going to do. When you have an amendment on a main motion...
I think they understood, Mr. Polton.
All right. I am absolutely, totally against the motion in any way, shape, or form. The intent was to remove the word ambulance from the motion so that people could vote on it simply.
And they did. And they voted it down.
It accomplished what I wanted, so I'll stop talking.
No, no, no. It failed. The amendment failed.
Oh, so now we're going to...
Now we're going back...
Now we're going to go to the main motion.
That's right.
So the confusion is that...
We're going to have another amendment to the original article.
The confusion comes with the fact that the amendment essentially rewrote the original article to simplify it. By voting down that amendment, which would have stricken the language having to do with ambulances, procedurally, it reverts to the original article, which talks both about fire station consolidation and the ambulances. So apparently, judging from the huddle that I see up at the front, there is yet another amendment that is going to be offered, and we'll have to wait to see what that is. As the moderator, John Kirland, pointed out, there's been an effort to try to get these amendments in the queue ahead of time because of the need to keyboard them into the computer system and to get the voting mechanism primed to accept an amendment to an article. So when an amendment is offered from the floor, as is happening right now, it is, has always been, but is now even more so a time-consuming process. I thought Paul Cohen's comments about the study, if the point of Sam Polton's amendment was simply to study the possible redistribution and/or closure of one of the five fire stations from five to four, or five to three, whatever, Paul Cohen points out that the 2007 study looked at that very scenario and concluded that, from the standpoint of response time, you needed all five. And his point was that a new study costing $55,000 wasn't going to change that outcome, and so why spend the $55,000 in the first place? Here's John Kirland.
Okay. I'm going to... Look, for the sake of time, I'm going to read to you what the amendment says.
Is there a motion to amend that?
There is. There is. There is.
Point of order, you have to make a motion.
She's going to make the motion. Marlene, you've got to make the motion.
I make a motion to amend the original article.
By striking...
By striking everything after the word examine and replacing it with the verbiage you have.
To study public safety systems in Chelmsford.
Correct.
Or an act in relation thereto.
So in essence, her motion broadens...
So, look, look. That is going to be, that is the motion. I have to, we have to entertain the motion, and you're invited to debate it. But basically, what it does is expand, it sort of expands a little bit just to study public safety.
Glenn Thornt, Precinct 5. Through you, Mr. Moderator, the town council. My hearing of the particular amendment that you put forward expands what we had been presented in the warrant book to something, at least by my imagination, is much greater than what we had originally come to town meeting to discuss. It includes, you know, the police department. It includes other kinds of things, and DPW, which could be road safety. I came here thinking about ambulance services and thinking about, thinking about the fire stations. And now with this particular amendment, which I am questioning with the town council, is it appropriate to broaden the scope to something that's so large that we could not have prepared for it at this meeting, Mr. Town Council?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Through you to the previous speaker. The main article is a request to conduct a study, and it's actually a request for funding to conduct a study. So I think that your point, although generally would be very well-taken, in this instance, it's still going to simply be an appropriation for a study.
I respectfully request more definition on that, because if the wording that I'm looking at is indeed the scope of the article to emergency ambulance and fire...
No, 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 no. No. We don't have, we didn't have time to get it on the screen, so that's why I read it to you.
Yes, I heard you.
Okay.
I was listening very carefully.
I'm glad.
And so what I heard was a study for public safety services, which was an immensely large scope, which is beyond what I am reading for the original article, and I don't want your explanation. I'm asking the town council if it is appropriate in town meeting to expand the scope of an article well beyond the parameters which we are looking at walking in the door.
And town council has advised me that the original article was for a study, and a study involving public safety. It certainly, from his perspective, was enough advance notice so that people who would be concerned about a $55,000 appropriation for a study regarding the fire stations or ambulance would have been on notice for this. That's town council's opinion. You may disagree, and you may vote any way you want, but that's what he says. Mr. Clancy?
Mr. Moderator, please start the clock. While I respect the position of the town council, I would have to respectfully disagree that this is an expansion of the intent of the article. Although I appreciate his position and his interpretation, I do believe that public services is a far field in the fetch from what was actually presented in the town warrant. Yes, it's a study, but it's a study on a specific number of things. It was a study on emergency ambulance service and the fire stations, and it is an expansion upon that. Yes, the money amount has not changed in this amendment. However, the expansion of what has been studied has. Therefore, I respectfully request that everyone vote this down, and when we get back to the original article, vote that one down, too.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Latina?
Brian Latina, Precinct 4. Point of order, Mr. Moderator. The previous speaker is correct. We've expanded this to include the fire station, ambulance service, every safety component in our town, including the police department. And with respect, if you want to start the clock, even though it was a point of order, that's fine with me, because sometimes we do make mistakes. Lawyers are known to make mistakes. We had a, we had a, we had another lawyer standing at this microphone right before me that has a different opinion than our town lawyer. And that's typically what you have in court. You have two lawyers, both with different opinions. So I would urge this body to vote no on this, and then we vote no on the next major part here, which is an ambulance study that is not part of what we need to do. And we can come back at spring town meeting, when each one of the boards has voted and listened to the public, which we have not heard on an ambulance study here, and then decided whether or not this is a financially good idea. This is what town meeting does. We do not change the rules in the middle of it. It's not appropriate. Please vote no, and then no again.
Thank you. Mr. Clancy?
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to clarify that my position in stating that I did not interpret the same way was not my legal and professional opinion as an attorney. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Joe Reddy, Precinct 1. I'd just like to move the question to vote on the amendment.
There's a motion to move the question. We'll do a hand vote. All in favor of moving the question, raise your hands. All opposed, passes. Now we will vote on the amendment, which was the basic public safety amendment.
Can we get the wording for that amendment, please?
They're working on it, but basically, it's...
I'll read it to you. "I move that the town transfer $55,000 from free cash to be expended by the Board of Selectmen in conjunction with the creation of an ad hoc public safety study committee for the purpose of hiring a consultant to study public safety systems in Chelmsford."
That's it.
And it's already failed. So now we go back to the original Article 5. And this is to conduct a study to establish a, examine whether the town should establish municipal emergency ambulance service and whether the town should consolidate fire So, yes, nobody apparently is willing to discuss it any longer. And fortunately, they're not. I think we've discussed this ad nauseam.
That's not the wording.
We haven't had the right wording three times in a row.
Which, do you have the original? That's what we're voting on, the original motion. Okay, look. The original motion is in your book. Do any of you not know what you're voting on? Okay, so people know what they're voting on.
I want to be sure this language will be corrected before the third motion is being voted.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Claire.
I want to be sure this language will be corrected before the third motion is being voted.
No, no. She's got the, she's got the right. It just didn't make the screen. Okay? Okay, so that fails. Okay, so that fails. So, now, that having been said, let us move to Article Six.
Which, I'm guessing, will be the last article we take up tonight. Uh, I actually am surprised that he's going to-
Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Article Six is a article sponsored by the Board of Selectmen, is to request a transfer of $30,000 from free cash to support the operations of the Chelmsford Center for the Arts at the Town Hall. This is a one-time appropriation from the, this year's free cash. Um, I support this article. It's basically, Susan Gates, who's volunteered and really brought the program to where it is today, um, a broader request to the Board of Selectmen that with $30,000 infusion of cash, they could further promote and enhance their offerings to the community that would further build upon its, uh, success as a resource center and as part of the economic engine in the center of the community that makes Chelmsford the special place it is today. So, I would ask your support for this article.
Thank you. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
The Finance Committee unanimously recommends approval of Articles-
Board of Selectmen have a recommendation?
Board of Selectmen unanimously approves this article.
Any discussion or questions? There being none, we will vote on Article Six to appropriate $30,000 from free cash to support the operations of the Chelmsford Center for the Arts.
Any of you who know Susan Gates know that she has poured her heart and soul into the CCA, the Chelmsford Center for the Arts, over the past few years. It is very difficult. Uh, it's actually a very expensive place to run, the old Town Hall, despite all the renovations that were done to it several years ago. Uh, the heating bill alone during the winter, I think I remember her saying, is, it's something like $10,000 a year. And so, um, this is, uh, to infuse, uh, that operation with funds to, uh, keep it going.
Article passes, 119 in favor. Four, uh, seven negative, no abstentions. Article Seven is the consent agenda, which, uh, includes Article Seven, Nine, Fourteen, and Fifteen. Mr. Manager?
Yeah, I'll, I'll try to walk through these real quickly, uh, because they are part of the consent agenda. Thirty, $3,000 is sought under Article Seven, uh, to provide funding to support the efforts by the Chelmsford Open Space Stewards, uh, on the miscellaneous costs of supporting the various open space lands and conservation lands across the community from sunny metal farms and so forth. This is going to pay for basic essentials such as gasoline, you know, mower blades, repairs, and so forth. And as we've all known, the efforts over the past decade, uh, be more than the past decade now, of the Open Space Stewards, certainly their contributions to the town are, are plentiful, and that this support, um, should be provided to, to cover their, their, their out-of-pocket costs. So, I'd ask the town meeting support for this article. Article, the next article of the consent agenda was Article Nine. This is for the Commonwealth Infrastructure Investment Fund. It's a whopping total of $5,035. And let me explain what's going on here. Basically, back in, um, 2016, the state legislature adopted a law signed by Governor Baker to regulate what was then the nascent, uh, alternative transportation networks, the Uber, the Lifts, and so forth. And so, what they did under that article is they imposed a 20 cent per ride assessment by the Department of Public Utilities, and half of that goes to the community where the ride originates. But they require that this appropriation come from, uh, before town meeting and be appropriated, and then every year, we have to report the expenditures from, uh, the fund to the state. So, for the calendar year 2017, we, we receive $5,035.80. Basically, what that means is that 10 cents a ride, just over 50,000 Uber, Lyft, those type of rides originated in Chelmsford, and those funds are restricted to address the impact of transportation network services or public purposes related to alternative modes of complete streets and so forth. We're going to use this money to improve the crosswalk, uh, traffic, traffic signal at the intersection of Omni Way and Bevica Road. Certainly, the improvement's more than that funding, but we'll envelope that money into that fund. And why we chose that location is, we recently had, uh, the occupancy of the Massachusetts Department of Children and Family Services relocated from Lowell to the Omni Way location, and so they have a number of, of clients who are visiting that facility by public transportation and otherwise, and we really want to improve the safety of that intersection. So, that's why, again, it's a nominal amount, uh, but we do have to appropriate that annually at town meeting, so you'll see this unless the legislature changes it every fall. Article Fourteen is $10,000 from the Cable Access to purchase a replacement utility trailer. Um, it's the standard white trailer thing that you see dragged behind vehicles and so forth. It houses their portable equipment. Uh, they're going to pull it up right now to show you that thing. It's a replacement trailer. It's not funded from the tax levy or the free cash, it's from the Cable Access Enterprise Fund, which comes from the surcharge on your, um, on your cable and internet bills. Um, and so, again, uh, this is a replacement equipment, so therefore, we put it on the consent agenda. And then, the last item was Article Fifteen, which is the Cemetery Improvement and Development Fund. As you know, that article has come before you repeatedly for the Pine Ridge Cemetery Expansion Pro- Project. Thus far, they've already cleared seven acres, uh, removed the tree stumps, done the grading and the loaming, and now they need funding to install chain link fencing, and they'll be coming before you at future town meetings until the project is complete, up until final loam and seeding. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Uh, does the Board of, uh, does the Finance Committee have a recommendation on those four articles?
The Finance Committee unanimously, the Finance Committee unanimously recommends approval of Articles Seven, Nine, Fourteen, and Fifteen.
Does the Board of Selectmen have a recommendation?
Board of Selectmen unanimously approves all, all four.
Any discussion? There being none, we will vote on the consent agenda.
I think John Kirland, our moderator, has, uh, reached the point at which he is going to, uh, try to get as much accomplished in the remaining time he's got as possible with the, and I toward perhaps, uh, keeping this town, Fall Town Meeting to a two-night affair, this, tonight and this coming Thursday. And you're seeing a very rare situation where the vote is unanimous.
Article passes, 127 in favor, no opposition, one abstention. Mr. Manager, Article Eight?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Article Eight is a request to transfer from free cash to sum of $27,500 to obtain a ground field survey of Vinyl Square. And the second part of the motion is a transfer from free cash to sum of $10,000 to purchase and install portable planters and dwarf trees in Vinyl Square. And the reason they're in this joint article is they are related items. Um, the, again, the request is, the state controls Vinyl Square. It's a state roadway, the state maintains it, plows it, and so forth. The Vinyl Square, um, Implementation Committee that works and meets periodically to beautify and improve the conditions of business climate in Vinyl Square came forward with a request to install, uh, portable tree planters, uh, in, in the square. And because it's a state roadway, the state response to that was, "Fine, we'll consider that request, but you need to provide us with a survey document that demonstrates that the installation of those, uh, portable tree planters will still allow for this remaining sidewalk area to be fully handicapped accessible." So, that's what we, we needed to do with this project. Uh, and then, once the, uh, remaining funds are done, and that's demonstrated, we would then use $10,000 to install 10 portable tree planters and 10 dwarf trees in Vinyl Square. Obviously, being portable, they'd be removed during the winter season, uh, probably brought over to the Richardson Road Site at, uh, DPW, covered with bark mulch, so they survive, you know, the winter season, and then can come back into the springtime. But the bigger issue is, is, well, gee, that's a lot of money for a survey, $27,000. Well, we have a future vision in line, um, in terms of what's going to happen with Vinyl Square, is, as I mentioned, is a state roadway. Right now, the road, the Vinyl Square area i- is within a view shed that needs to really be reconstructed and rebuilt. And unfortunately, there is no plan before the state in order to do that. So, we're basically want to jumpstart the process, because by conducting a full survey, that we can then submit to the state what's known as 25% approval, that would then make it eligible for transportation improvement project funds that are held by the state that are, are not the towns' chapter 90 monies. And then, if you make that eligible, we would look to the Northern Middlesex Council of Government to bring in a plan, have public input, have public, uh, series of workshops and discussions and so forth, to look at if you are going to reconstruct Vinyl Square, is, are there ways to improve it, the traffic pattern and flow? Um, for example, you know, would you make the intersection of Princeton Street, um, and Middlesex Street a T-intersection as opposed to that the intersection that is now sort of a challenge, quote-unquote, as you come into that situation at various times of the day, as well as other areas, improving the parking bumpouts and so forth? Basically, it's, it's trying to look at, how should this intersection be configured in the 21st century as we head into the third decade? Um, so, that's what we're seeking now, um, under this article. So, again, we'd ask your support for the survey, uh, for both the short and long-term purposes, in terms of major investment, probably in over $3 million if we can get the state funding to redo that area, but also the short-term effort of the, putting some green space in the, in that area, uh, to meet the state's standards. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Does Finance Committee have a recommendation?
The Finance Committee unanimously recommends approval of Article Eight.
Board of Selectmen have a recommendation?
Board of Selectmen unanimously, uh, recommend Number Eight.
Any discussion?
Nancy Arroway, Precinct One, just a question for clarification. Mr. Moderator, through you to the Town Manager. Do we have to put these trees in in order to do the survey?
No. You can do the survey without the trees, but you can't do the tree, but you can't do the trees without the survey.
Why are we doing the trees?
Oh, because the Vinyl Square Committee, which is already, if you go out there, you'll notice during this time of the year, they have the portable flower pot planters out there that the town provides annually. They want to increase it by putting in some, basically dwarf trees to, to reduce the asphalt jungle that's out there by bringing in some greenery where possible in, in the sidewalk areas of Vinyl Square. So, it's, in essence, it's a business improvement investment.
But if we do the survey, it can be used for proposals for future state aid?
Exactly. But that, 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 that project is probably a minimum five to seven years out in a best-case scenario. By the time you get the full survey done, submit the draft plan, get on the state list, um, Pat Wojcicki, who's a member of the Board of Selectmen, who serves on the Northern Middlesex Council of Government Transportation, uh, Committee, you know, can attest that that's basically a seven-year process to get funding.
So, we don't need that survey right now in terms of the, the long-term proposals for improvements?
No, we have, no, we have to, because they're not, they're only going to fund projects that are ready to be developed. So, we've got to basically prime the engine by doing the survey, because they won't give you, they won't fund a product that's at stage zero. You have to be 25% complete with the design plan in order for them to fully fund it.
I think I got that.
Okay, thank you. Any further comment? There being none, we will vote on, uh, Article Eight, which is the Vinyl Square free, free cash, um, $27,500 for a ground field survey, and $10,000 for the purchase of installing planters and dwarf trees.
And that's going to pass, and I'm betting that Brian Latina is going to move to adjourn.
Article passes, 112 in favor, 11 opposed for Article Eight.
Mr. Moderator, seeing the late hour, I'd motion to adjourn.
Okay, before we do that, there is a special town meeting at 7:29 on Thursday, so this will be immediately following the special town meeting. All in favor? Opposed? Thank you very much.
And so, we bring to a close the first evening of the Fall Town Meeting, uh, for 2018. It has been a very interesting evening, as for those of you who've been with us. And I think the tone was set very early on by, uh, the Finance Director, John Souza, who set forth a five-year financial forecast, as he is obliged to do, and showed that, uh, in very short order, we will actually be running a deficit. You probably know that there's a limit to how much, uh, the taxes can be raised, that's the 2.5% limit, and, uh, without an infusion of new people to pay taxes, uh, or, uh, a restructuring that reduces the expenses that we have, uh, there will be a, a point at which, uh, we don't bring in as much money as we want to spend. It's exacerbated by the fact that we have about, right now, $12 million, uh, that we pay every year in, uh, to pay the debt on the bonds and such that we've already approved. So, that set a tone of, uh, there is not enough money to go around, where there's not enough money for five fire stations, uh, we might need to have an ambulance service to bring in new revenue, uh, we're looking at the possibility of having, the certainty in some sense, of creating a new division for our DPW, uh, to look at, uh, to manage our storm drain system. All of this was the backdrop of, of that financial forecast, and you saw, I'm pretty sure, that, uh, tensions were a little sharper than usual. Um, I thought it was appropriate and, and, uh, interesting that Paul Cohen got up at one point to speak to this issue of the ambulance study. Uh, he has been around now for, I think he said 12 years, a cooler head is perhaps prevailing. In any case, uh, we have other things to take up, uh, come Thursday night, quite a few zoning bylaw amendments. What we don't know yet is whether, um, Article Seventeen is going to be on the docket. That's the one that has to do with animals here in town. Maybe a little, uh, uh, something a little bit lighter, uh, to deal with, uh, against these other weighty issues. So, I want to thank you for joining us tonight. I'm Kelly Beadie for the staff and volunteers, the great volunteers we have at Chelmsford Telemedia. We look forward to seeing you Thursday night. Good night.